Calling this meeting of the Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education on September 2nd, 2021 to order, I will take role. Member Murawski? Member Wu? Member Garcia? Member Villa?
Here.
Member Rhodes? Member Phillips?
Here.
Member Pritchett, I'm here. We have no public comment at this time, so we will move to close. All right, calling this meeting back to order of the Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education. Item 4.0, Pledge of Allegiance, will be led by our superintendent.
Thank you, please stand.
All right. Item 4.0, or, I'm sorry, item 4.2, Broadcast Statement. To the member Jean.
This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being recorded in its entirety and will be cable cast.
Turn on your microphone, honey.
It's on. Will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on Comcast, Solidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse. Today's meeting will air Sunday, August, Sunday, September 5th at noon and Monday, September 6th at noon. It is also webcast at metro14live.sac county.net and can be viewed on Metro Cable 14's YouTube channel. The public has been given the opportunity to address the board through public comment, either by submitting comments which are posted on our website or by speaking during the meeting. Members of the public who wish to speak during the meeting submitted a speaker form by noon today and were sent a link to participate. When it is your turn to provide comment, we will call on you to provide comment orally. Your video will not be on. Please always limit comments during public comment to items that are not on the agenda. If you do comment on an item that is, we will ask that you please defer your comments until your item comes up.
Perfect, thank you. All right, item 4.3, Stellar Student. Our stellar student is Jonathan Perez, a sixth grade student from Pacific Elementary School, and he's entering seventh grade at Willsey Wood Middle School. It'd be introduced by a member Phillips.
I'm assuming my mic is on?
Yes.
Okay, can't hear it, it's different. Um, sorry. We're sitting in different places tonight, so I can't even look up and see faces.
We're getting through it.
Yes, so hey, my stellar student is Jonathan Perez. He was a sixth grader when he was recommended for this, but he's going to be going into the seventh grade at Willsey Wood, which means he started today. The student nominated to be tonight's stellar student again is Jonathan Perez, and he's a rising seventh grader. And I guess while he was still attending Pacific Elementary School, he participated in our region's STEAM logo design contest for SCOWI. His design went on to place third in the state. Third in the state. Jonathan was nominated by both the summer program manager, Bo Mi Pai, and his school principal, Tara Lampkins. Great job.
That is amazing, and it's my understanding that we have his mother online.
Yes.
Would you like to say a few words?
Le gustaría decir algunas palabras?
Uh, si, me puede repetir otra vez? Es que no lo escuché bien.
Si le gustaría expresar algunas palabras?
Oh, ah, pues sí, pues que estoy muy contenta de que él haya agarrado ese lugar, y este, pues agradecida de que lo pusieron ahí.
Well, yes, I'm very happy that he was able to receive that placement, and I'm very grateful for it as well that you placed him there. Thank you.
Very exciting, congratulations. And I believe we also have a principal online. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, I would. I would like to say congratulations to Jonathan Perez, who is a forever Pacific Puma. Although you are not with us this year, yes, you are joining and continuing your education at Willsey Wood. We are proud of you. As board member Phillips said, third in the state is a big feat, and we know that we will expect and see more great things from you, Jonathan. Our forever Pacific Puma, congratulations.
Ah, very sweet.
Expresamos felicidad a Jonathan por ser un Puma Pacífico para siempre, aunque ya no esté con nosotros en nuestra escuela. Estamos muy orgullosos de él por haber ubicado el tercer lugar a nivel estatal. Esperamos con las excelentes de él y sabemos que tiene gran potencial. Felicidades.
Congratulations, Jonathan. We're very proud of you, and thank you, Mom.
Thank you.
All right. Item 5.0, Announcement of Action Taken in Closed Session, Ms. Collins.
Good evening, President Pritchett, members of the board. There are six announcements coming out of closed session. The board approved two special education settlement agreements identified as OAH case numbers 2021050802 and OAH case number 2021040766. Each agreement was approved by a unanimous vote of those members present, 6 to 0. Member Murawski was absent. The next announcement is that the board voted again unanimously, 6 to 0 of those members present. Member Murawski was absent, to receive an irrevocable offer by Signature Homes to reserve a 10.01 acre site in the Delta Shores Project, which would allow the district to acquire the property at a future date. The remaining announcements will be made by the superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. I want to just be, I'm very excited about making these announcements. The first one is that by unanimous vote of 7 to 0, the board approved the appointment of Ms. Lenisha Kobell as principal of George Washington Harbor School of Arts and Science. Congratulations, Ms. Kobell. Second, also by unanimous vote of 7 to 0, the board approved the appointment of Ms. Sarah Sheeline as principal of H.W. Harkness Elementary School. Congratulations, Ms. Sheeline. And third, by unanimous vote of 7 to 0, the board approved the appointment of Dr. Letitia Stockdale as principal of Pitt Carson International Academy. Congratulations, Dr. Stockdale.
Great, thank you, superintendent, and congratulations to everyone. All right, item 6.0, Agenda Adoption. Can I get a motion? All right, I have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
President Pritchett, if I could just interject, there is a possibility that I'm going to ask that we delay for a few minutes, 8.1, and I will let you know as we are making some change.
Okay, we will keep the board updated, thank you. Item 7.0, Public Comment. We have 11 public comments tonight.
Yes, our first public comment is from Ingrid Hutchins.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, usually I write out what I'm going to say, I apologize for my scattered speaking today, but it was the first day of school and I didn't have much time on my hands. I just wanted to talk to you about starting to move forward in a different direction. I really at once implore the board to ask the district to work collaboratively with us teachers. We want nothing but the best for our students, and I have felt over the past few years of my career, this is my 21st year, that we're somehow being made to, into some sort of enemy of the district, and we're not. We're trying to work our best to come up with the best programs for our students. We have some great ideas for independent study. We would still love to work with the district to make that a fabulous program for our families that want to stay home, but, you know, we need to both work on that. It needs to, we need to be a team instead of combatants in this. And I'm watching what this is doing to our district, I'm watching what this is doing to our families. I'm hearing what our families are saying about how they feel about how this year is starting, and I think, you know, we can't go back and fix the things we've done in the past, but we most definitely can decide that today it changes, and I'm asking you as board members to make today that day for us, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchins. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Jody Bone.
Can we maybe get back to the speaker and move on to the next? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kara Sinhorst.
Good evening, board. I want to echo Ingrid and say that there's a lot of expertise and real-world experience right at your fingertips. If you just reach out to the teachers, we would never have let this happen to the 1,600 families wanting independent study. It was a boondoggle, and it was a source of stress and confusion and fear for so many families, and that was not fair to them. And I don't know where on this school board or in the superintendent's office, the nameplate that says "The buck stops here" lands, but someone needs to take responsibility and do a better job, because this is unacceptable for Sacramento families.
Thank you, Ms. Sinhorst. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Nikki Malofsky.
I yield my time to any teacher who needs extra time.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Rebecca Electronica.
Rebecca, are you there?
Oh, yes, hello, sorry.
Yep, go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Rebecca Electronica, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Health Education Council, a nonprofit organization with a 30-year history of working with the community to cultivate health and well-being in underserved communities. Over the past five years, we have deepened our efforts to support Sacramento City Unified Schools, students, and families. Last school year demonstrated the utmost importance of supporting the overall well-being of students and their families in school settings. Schools provide environments that not only advance learning, but also foster whole child wellness through providing good nutrition, promoting regular physical activity, and supporting mental health. Over this past year and a half, we have also seen schools meet basic needs of their students and families in an even greater capacity than before. It has been amazing to see how principals, school support staff, and teachers at schools like Pacific Elementary, Ethel Baker, Bowling Green, Oak Ridge Elementary, and others have gone above and beyond to support the overall well-being of their students and families. We are honored to work with them and appreciate their partnership. Together with the staff at these schools, we have been able to provide weekly produce distributions for families, conduct engaging nutrition lessons for students, host a virtual Every Good Healthy Week, and even provide a socially-distanced parent fitness group. In addition, we continue to provide resources and give support to school and district staff, as well as students and families across the district. Recently, we developed a wellness guide to be distributed district-wide with information, resources, and activities around mental health, nutrition, and physical activity for teachers to implement in the classroom. This guide also reminds teachers and school staff of the wellness policy and promotes wellness policy goals by providing practical information and easy-to-implement activities for teachers of all grade levels. The guide has been reviewed by various SAC City partners who believe it will be a valuable resource for teachers and other school staff as another potentially challenging school year begins. We thank you for your district's support and partnership, and we ask that you continue to prioritize the overall health and well-being of SAC City students and families, as this will make a lasting impact both on their academic success and their long-term life success as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
The next speaker is Terrence Gladney.
Good evening, Terrence.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. At Cabrillo this morning, there was a long line of parents, students awaiting screening and entry onto campus, waiting, waiting with hope, knowing that inside those gates they will find the love and support of teachers and staff who will impart knowledge, caring, and strength into their minds and hearts to build them back up from the damaging effects of the past 18 months. Last night, in a community group meeting, as parents polled each other on the availability of welcoming pre-first day activities, the superintendent admonished that if he heard that there were not communications coming from school sites, who the district quote-unquote empowers as the first points of contact for students and families, he would be quote-unquote "very upset." I guess dumping the responsibility for creating two weeks of independent study materials on teachers and school sites the day before school, or scheduling a last-minute Zoom for families interested in keeping their students away from in-person instruction, or making multiple changes to the delivery model for independent instruction days before school begins, is what the superintendent would deem as empowerment. But I'm wondering if the superintendent is very upset at the district's failure to effectively utilize the past 18 months to adequately prepare for today. We expect much more from our students, giving them sometimes as little as days to complete projects, and incompletion, even in that short timeframe, equates to failure. Are any of you very upset for neglecting our most disenfranchised babies, or failing to acknowledge the voices of over 1,600 students choosing to stay away while bending to the will of a privileged few who pushed to return last spring? How long should we wait for you and staff to actually perform? 22 special board meetings since March 23rd, 2020, including one this past Monday, which was not focused on reopening, and we still weren't adequately prepared to serve all of our students. I thought that smoking was not allowed in our schools, but meeting after meeting, all I see and hear is a bunch of adults blowing smoke you-know-where. To quote those privileged parents, maybe we can just fix all those problems and concerns by purchasing a few fans from Target and opening some windows. I'll preempt your endless applause and appreciation for highly-paid, salaried staff simply performing the work within the scope of their positions, and use those fans to hopefully redirect the applause appropriately to our site administrators, teachers, staff, families, and students who persevere despite your failures, your failure to act as our elected officials and direct staff, site administrators who have chosen to stay amid the mass exodus of their colleagues.
Mr. Gladney, if you could please just wrap it up.
Teachers who work well beyond their contracted hours, families and students who wait endlessly for change and still hope. And I ask you again, are you very upset? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
That was the final speaker that is online.
Uh, do we have the gentleman that was, that we missed?
Jody Bone is no longer online.
And no, and there was no one else that we missed?
No.
Okay, all right. Item 8.0, Special Presentation. We're going to skip over 8.1 and come back to that. 8.2, Resolution Number 3220, Recognition of September 2021 Attendance Awareness Month. Ms. Kretschman?
Hi, good afternoon.
Oh, hi, Mr. Sanchez.
Sorry, but Jennifer Kretschman couldn't be here with us due to an emergency, so I'll go ahead and do introductions, and then I'll allow my colleagues to step in and read the resolution.
Thank you.
So, good afternoon, super tonight, I'm President Pritchett and respect the board members. I'm O'Neil Sanchez, part of the Attendance and Engagement Department at SAC City Unified School District. I, along with my colleagues Andrea Torres and Monica Lopez-Larios, are representing for the rest of our team, Sandra Laird, Joseph Picard, Esteban Ball, and our team lead, Jennifer Kretschman. While originally known as the Be Here Team, this past year brought plenty of changes to our attendance-focused work, requiring us to adapt the need of supporting our students through a more intensive, resorted-practice approach. We connected with our families, built positive relationships, and helped them engage in the safest way possible. From this, care was created. Connect, ask, relate, engage. The vision statement of care is authentic relationships with students, families, and the community are the foundation for our work. To reduce chronic absence, increase student engagement, and ensure academic success for all students, especially our most vulnerable. As we return to in-person learning, we will need to take a strategic, transformative, and long-term approach to engage students and families this school year. To start this effort, we would like to recognize September 2021 as Attendance Awareness Month. During this month, we encourage our school communities to rebound with attendance by joining in our Attendance Awareness Celebrations, informing families of the negative impacts of chronic absence, and recognizing other school attendants. Now I'd like to pass over to my colleagues Andrea Torres and Monica Lopez-Larios who will read the resolution.
Resolution Number 3220, Recognition of September 2021 as Attendance Awareness Month. Whereas Sacramento City Unified School District's guiding principle of equity, access, and social justice strives to ensure that all students are given an equal opportunity to graduate with the greatest number of post-secondary choices from the widest array of options. Whereas good attendance is essential to students' achievement, graduation, and lifelong success, and we are committed to dedicating resources and attention to reducing chronic absenteeism rates with a focus starting as early as transitional kindergarten. Whereas chronic absence, missing 10% or more of school for any reason, including excused and unexcused absences, is a proven predictor of academic struggles, dropout. Whereas chronic absence is now a required reporting metric under the Federal Every Student Succeeds Act and an indicator on the California State Dashboard. Whereas improving attendance and reducing chronic absence, particularly among underserved student populations, takes commitment, collaboration, and tailored approaches to particular challenges and strengths in each community. Whereas chronic absence predicts lower third-grade reading efficiency, course failure, and eventual dropout, it weakens our communities and our local economy. Whereas the impact of chronic absence hits students in low-income communities, students of color, and other underserved students. It gets particularly hard if they do not have the resources to make up for the lost time in the classroom and are more likely to face systemic barriers to getting to school, including but not limited to unreliable transportation, lack of access to healthcare, and unstable or unaffordable housing. Whereas attendance gaps among groups of students often turn into achievement gaps that undermine student success. Whereas absenteeism also undermines efforts to improve struggling schools due to the difficulty of measuring improvement in classroom instruction if students are not in class to benefit. Whereas school and community partners can assist by reaching out to frequently-absent students and their families to determine and address barriers that prevent them from attending school. Whereas healthcare providers can share the importance of school attendance with families and can offer proactive preventive care to reduce absences. Whereas Sacramento City Unified School District will track, calculate, and share data on the number of students chronically absent in order to identify attendance gaps and deliver appropriate interventions to the right students. Whereas all students, even those who show up regularly, are affected by chronic absence because teachers must spend valuable instructional time reviewing material with students who are absent. And whereas chronic absence can be significantly reduced when schools, families, and communities work together to monitor and promote good attendance and address hurdles that keep students from getting to school. Now therefore be it resolved that the Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education does hereby proclaim that our school district will stand with the nation in recognizing September as Attendance Awareness Month. We hereby commit to focusing on reducing chronic absenteeism to give all students an equitable opportunity to learn, grow, and thrive academically, emotionally, and socially. Specifically, we shall raise public awareness and concern about the toxic impact of chronic absence through CARE, our Youth Led Be Here Attendance and Engagement Campaign, encourage broad community engagement, and sustain civic action to help families get their students to school every day. Partner with local organizations like block Sacramento, California After-School Network, and City Year Sacramento to have school-based attendance incentives and programs throughout September to set the stage for a successful 2021, 2022 school year. Set a goal of 96% average daily attendance for the entire month of September 2021 for all of our schools. Partner with the national leaders in chronic absence research, attendance works, to thoroughly assess district practices around attendance to create systemic change. Work directly with school sites to engage staff, students, and families in an ongoing effort to improve attendance. Continue to use the MPSS framework to analyze our data to identify which students and schools in our district are most affected by chronic absence, as well as to determine common attendance challenges specific to our urban community that need to be addressed. Provide research-based best practice early intervention to students who are at risk of becoming or are already considered chronically absent. Publish chronic absenteeism data along with average daily attendance for the district as a whole, as well as by grade, school, and student group.
Thank you, and I think we have one public comment on this item?
Yes, we have a public comment from Sid DeHori.
Thank you. Good evening, Sid.
Good evening, can you hear me okay?
Yep, we can, good evening.
Thank you, um, thank you for the, the great, I mean, work that the team has done in terms of crafting a very well-rounded plan for dealing with chronic absenteeism. I don't think anybody's going to argue that that's an issue. However, I'm hoping that the district can add a little bit of nuance to the messaging, at least recognizing that we are in the middle of a pandemic, encouraging people to not come in if they are sick, and making sure that they're also taking care of their own mental health. We need to de-stigmatize those things, and I'm not, you know, I'm not here to judge anyone who feels like they need to take their kids to school when they're sick, but I think every parent I know has seen the kids who should, by all rights, be taking care of themselves at home. And I think we need to make sure that we're also not lionizing people showing up instead of having the opportunity to care for themselves, particularly with our perfect attendance incentives. So, I, just, just a request for some nuance. Thank you.
Thank you, Sid. All right, I'll put it up for a board comment. I just have one comment, and thank you, Sid, for bringing that up, because it was actually one of my questions. Though this is important that we're encouraging students to not have chronic absences, but I am wondering, and within the district and superintendent, if you can answer this, or one of the staff members, but in terms of students that are quarantined or feel sick because of COVID symptoms, are those considered excused absences without a doctor's note?
Yes, they are.
They are, without a doctor's note, okay. All right, that is very helpful, thank you for that. I know that there's a lot of students that do strive for perfect attendance, and that would, maybe with a sniffly nose, they may just attend school, so I appreciate that feedback. Are there any other board comments? No? Okay, all right, so with that, let me get to... All right, this is, can I get a motion to approve Resolution Number 3220?
A second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Student preferential vote. Thank you, and superintendent roll call.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Murawski? Member Wu? Member Garcia? Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Great, thank you. All right, item 9.0, board, uh, do you still want to?
Yes.
Okay, just let me know when we're ready. Item 9.0, Board Workshop Strategy Plan and Other Initiatives. 9.1, Early Literacy Support Block, ELSB, Grant Literacy Action Plans, and Budget Expaniture Report.
Good evening, and as Jeanette Schroder, our ELA coordinator, is getting her login all settled, I wanted to just open with saying that I am so grateful to both Jeanette and you'll hear tonight about our leaders who are leading some of this very important work, and to share some of what Jeanette has done with this work that is supporting our entire system. Some of the research that you'll get to hear a little bit about that anchored the assessments in that anchored the assessments in this grant are also the assessment that we've moved forward and suggested that our teachers are using to best understand where our students are in their learning process after these few months of our pandemic, this, this last year and a half. So we're, not only are we going to hear about our four schools tonight and our action plans, but I want you also to know, because Jeanette's very humble and she won't share, that she's taken this learning opportunity to also work to improve instruction for all of our students across our system. So Jeanette, I just wanted to make sure that you knew how much we deeply appreciate you and all that you do for our system and for our students. Thank you. And Jeanette, are you logged in and ready to go? Is she logged in there? Let me.
Christine, this is, this is Erin Hansen. I, Jeanette is having difficulty with her login, but she's just about to get on. I, I'm on speakerphone with her, and she is almost there. So, would you like to, would you like to talk a little bit more about it, or would you like me to pick it up? I'm so sorry, everyone. We had a little miscommunication about the, the panelist situation.
That's okay. And sometimes, I don't know if she's looking for her link, sometimes, um, mine, mine still goes tucked into that little separate file, that little junk file. So if she's struggling to find it, that might be where, where it's tucked away. That's where I.
I can hear her. She's on now. I'm here. I am super sorry. For some reason, my passcode would not work. And it feels not working, so you're going to listen to me in the dark.
Well, and Jeanette, before you, um, before you begin, because you may not have heard, but we just opened with gratitude to you, to our leaders, and acknowledge the work that you're doing with this grant to support our entire system. So you missed a few minutes of celebrating you. I just wanted to make sure you knew that in case you didn't get to hear.
Thank you so much, and good evening, um, board members and superintendent Aguilar. It's an honor to be here tonight. I'm here to present to you, um, some information, so hopefully tonight we can approve these four ELSB Early Literacy Support Block Grant Action Plans and the budgets that go along with them. Next slide, please. A little overview on the history of this grant. I've mentioned this before to you in board meetings previously, but, um, section one thirteen of the educational trailer bill appropriated fifty million dollars to establish this grant to support some of our lowest-performing schools in California. So to determine who these, um, these low-performing schools were, um, California Department of Education looked at the two thousand nineteen summative ELA assessment scores on the CAS, and they identified the lowest-performing third-grade schools in California, the lowest-performing seventy-five schools. Um, and they identified them scoring at a level one on the CAS score. Um, CDE notified, um, districts who had schools that qualified for that in August of twenty twenty, and we then applied to participate in this grant. Next slide, please. The four schools in our district that did qualify for this grant are AM Win Waldorf Inspired Elementary, Ethel I Baker Elementary, John D. Sloane, and then John H. Still Elementary. A little bit about the overview of the grant. Um, the grant required, um, local agencies to support with a process that we all went through since last January. And so the four contributing stakeholders that have supported with this grant are Sacramento County Office of Education. They're supporting the entire Northern California section for this grant. Pivot Learning and Core, as well as the California Department of Ed. Next slide, please. The goal of the Early Literacy Support Block Grant is to develop and implement literacy instruction to support programs particularly focused on those early grades of instruction, TK through third grade, with the hope of ultimately resulting in better outcomes for our students. This goal will be achieved through four focuses. One focus is advancing literacy skills of students to ensure that every student will perform at grade level by the end of third grade. We also, um, are hoping this goal can achieve by increasing high-quality literacy teaching opportunities, as well as, um, increasing teacher knowledge around research-based assessments that drive literacy support. This goal will also be achieved by increasing pupil support, such as expanded learning opportunities, extending the day for some schools should they choose to, and as, as well as expanding access to the library. And finally, the fourth way we will reach this goal is to increase family community support, such as literacy education training for families, mental health resources, and support for pupil learning. We're going to stay on this slide because this slide is, um, a really important slide because we just completed our first year of the grant. It began in January, and this was, um, it was really special. So normally, when you apply for, you apply for a grant and it's already figured out for you, this, um, this first year, SCOEY and CORE and PIVOT took us on a learning journey. So how it took place was, we had an orientation in December. In January, February, schools were asked to create a literacy team, and the literacy team was made up of a kindergarten teacher, a first-grade teacher, a second-grade teacher, a third-grade teacher, if they had a TK teacher, or any, um, primary special ed teachers, as well as the administrator on the site and literacy coaches. And these literacy teams attended nine professional development opportunities. And so you'll see here in January and February, we really dug into evidence-based reading instruction and assessment, and, and, and really digging into the types of assessments that are going to help us, um, improve outcomes for our students. So once we did that, in March, these literacy teams were provided the opportunity to really dig into the root cause analysis for each of their schools as to why they thought these outcomes were, were, um, happening. From there, they were able to perform a needs assessment and really identify the strategies that they can focus on for the next three years to drive how they're going to improve the outcome. And that's how they developed their literacy action plan. So they spent numerous hours, um, creating their action plan using metrics and, and also engaging stakeholders along the way for feedback. These action plans were due in Jan, in May, and I have to say, the administrators at these sites were diligently with me back and forth with CDE to make sure that these, these action plans met the requirements of the grant, and, um, they're really solid, and they're really tailored to each site. And so here we are, they have been conditionally approved by CDE. We're just pending your approval. They've also been, um, approved by the stakeholders at the site that will be involved with the grant, as well as other stakeholders like BLAC and the School Site Council. Next slide, please. So I'm just going to take you through a quick view of what the action plan looks like. There, I think, twenty-four pages each. So the first section just lays out what the, what the leadership teams went through those first few months of professional development. So the stakeholder engagement, the root cause analysis, and the needs assessment that they performed was inserted there. Section two, um, is where they put their goals for their grant, as well as the actions they're going to take each year to work towards that, that really, um, end goal of getting their kids reading by third grade. And then, next slide, please. Section three is more flushed out, so it's really where they decide based on that needs assessment which categories they're going to focus on. And I'm going to let you know some of the strategies that you can see in these grants on the next slide. So some of the strategies that you would see in these grants at each of these sites are, um, several of them purchased DIB, which is a, um, research-based scientifically-proven phonics instruction program. They're taking their teachers through training, as well as having coaching follow-up. Uh, some, all of them are going to use diagnostic assessments, including DIBELS, to make sure that what they purchase and how they're teaching is actually impacting students. They're also going to continue their learning journey around evidence-based professional learning pertaining to the framework because beyond phonics, we want to make sure that we're teaching, uh, language comprehension as well. Next slide, please. A few of our schools have hired literacy coaches and outside consultancy to support with that coaching follow-up. Some of our schools are going to improve connectedness by doing home visits and improve that multi-tier system of support. Three of our schools are hiring librarians so they can expand the literacy walls beyond the classroom. And then all of them are providing literacy training night for families to really build how students and, um, families can support each other for their literacy instruction. Next slide, please. There is a budget. This is it for the entire grant. It's over three million dollars. If you keep clicking, you'll see the breakdown for all four schools. Smaller schools get smaller funding based on student enrollment. Next slide, please. There is requirements for the grant, so there's quarterly reporting, which I take care of as the grant lead for the district, and I, um, we make sure that we, we, we are assessing how, how funds are being spent, and if it's matching with the grant requirements are suggesting and what the action plan actually says. And then we also have annual reporting, and that's actually quite lengthy because with the annual reporting, we're pulling metrics, and we're, um, we're really, uh, talking about each action step and the metrics that we're using to make sure that we're, we're really working towards that goal. So year two, next steps for the grant. There's going to be continued technical assistance with the schools as they implement their action plan. Um, cohort one teachers, the literacy, um, teachers on the literacy groups that went through those nine trainings are going to continue online elementary reading academy around the science of reading. There's some new, uh, PLCs being administered between other districts, so we have reading fundamentals for the administrators. We also have a reading leader, leader institute that's being provided by CORE. There are, um, professional learning networks being established, and, um, we're going to get to participate in the statewide literacy conference. And you'll see that in the next slide for, for deepening and really sustaining implementation, they're going to cascade that opportunity for online reading academy to the other teachers that will participate in this grant, the other K-three teachers, and those other wonderful networks are going to continue. Because this grant's really all about sustaining, sustaining beyond the grant, right? We want kids continually working towards reading by third grade. So now I am going to open up to any questions that you might have. Next slide, please.
All right, we have no public comment at this time. Member, uh, Phillips?
Um, so I just completely lost my train of thought. Next? When I remember, I'll hit the button again.
Okay, just let me know. All right, member Garcia?
Um, yes, thank you for the presentation. Um, I read through some of these plans and, um, uh, you know, uh, exciting stuff will be happening at these school sites because of this extra funding. Um, and, you know, I reflected upon the unfortunate reason why they're getting the funding, um, because they are one of the lowest-performing schools in this particular area. But I also, um, I also noticed like common themes in throughout the, um, the plans in terms of, um, the, uh, lack of professional development being available, um, uh, not only in terms of the content, but also in terms of analyzing data and then applying, uh, and then assessments too. So these are themes that I just started noticing from plan to plan to plan, so it just made me wonder how is this, um, going to be an opportunity for the district to maybe, uh, learn from, because essentially they're, I consider them as pilots, you know, these, these four sites with this extra funding. How are we, how is the district going to learn from the great stuff that's happening because of these opportunities? And how is it that it comes back to maybe this either work that happens in the central office or policy decisions that need to be made um, in terms of future professional development for teachers? Um, future, um, and then the assessment piece, because I don't know how it ties back into the conversation that we've had of the importance of common assessments at the district level. So I know that was a lot, but, um, but I was, I just wanted to, um, see if you had a response for that um, before I, I just, I just end with another question.
Absolutely. So I can say that this experience that, um, I've been honored to embark on with the four schools and their, their leadership, their literacy leadership teams, has been such a great opportunity. Like even the way SCOEY and CORE, um, have taken us through the simple steps of, of analyzing what we already have in our classroom, really looking at the data, or if there is no data, how we can get data, as well as, um, taking the time to, to do that needs assessment so that we can create action plan for all sites. Because one of the things that's been such a blessing about this opportunity is the leadership teams are really building the actions that their sites are going to go through. And we all know that when, when that type of learning happens, um, there's more efficacy by the participants that are doing it. And, um, I can say that this definitely ties in with district common assessment. I'm going to say it every time I'm in front of you guys. We need district common assessments, especially in the early grades. And the assessments that we're going to use to measure the metrics within this grant are the assessments that we're proposing to SCTA as our district common assessments for foundational field.
Okay, well, um, that's, that's very helpful, um, because there's just, um, plan after plan that you have these themes where there's a drought, um, a want, right? Because there, there, we have educators who want to, um, to have professional development, development, and, um, you know, uh, apply the assessments in a consistent fashion, um, and then analyze the data, and then learn from that data to inform, you know, what comes next. So, um, so I'm, um, I'm hopeful that, um, that we're going to see and hear a lot of great, um, updates and throughout the, the life of this grant. And I'm also really interested in learning how we're going to learn from these, um, four sites and how we're going to be able to, um, apply those lessons and those practices to other sites throughout the, um, the, the district. I did want to, um, highlight one of the, um, one of the elementary schools. I think it was Ethel I Baker. They are, um, not only are they hiring a librarian like two other sites, but they're also bringing culturally relevant, um, literature to their, um, to their, um, library that I don't think has seen an update in textbooks in, in about seven years. And maybe I'm confusing another site, but, but it was just, um, I don't know. It was just, it was just really good to, to read that type of work that's happening at school sites, so that's all I wanted to share. So thank you for your part in, in advancing this great effort.
Thank you, member Garcia. I'm excited for Ethel I Baker too. They're all, the, each plan is so tailored to the site, which is a lovely, um, part of this, and they're really making strategic decisions for what's going to work for their schools.
Thank you. Member Rhodes?
Thank you. Um, no, this is, uh, amazing to be able to have, uh, for, for our families, for our school sites. Um, one of the things, uh, as I, as I looked over it, how the, the process of that you guys went through from the, uh, stakeholder engagement to, uh, cutting the issue or the root cause analysis, and then the needs assessment. Um, I think that type of work, uh, gives you the outcomes that you have now. Um, well, I always go by saying the idea of, uh, when people have change done to them, it's often seen as violence. When they have change done with them, it's seen as deliberation. And so you have direct buy-in from the school sites around what they want to create and build, and, um, I think that's amazing here. I do have a question. I do have a question. It kind of goes to, we have the literacy nights. What do the literacy nights look like? I don't know if you can tell me exactly. What do they look like during COVID and how, how are we thinking about connecting?
That's a really good question. So I know they're in the plan. I don't know if they've been planned yet.
Yeah.
Member Rhodes, but I'm going to get back to you on that question as they get closer.
Okay, yeah, because the, the family and community supports portion of it is going to be huge and family buy-in towards the work is also critical as we move forward to changing the outcomes for our students. It's not just what they do in a school day, it's the outside indicators to that same success. And so I think that's, that's a crucial point. And I'll be interesting, interesting to hear how we go about that during these COVID times. And that's all for me.
Yeah, and I do agree, you know, there's one thing that COVID has taught us. We can pull families in so much more now that we have the opportunity to come, come visit virtually. And even at the D U X meetings that I attend, so many more families are showing up because of the virtual opportunities. So even with and without COVID, I hope that we, we learn and use from the strategies we've learned this year with COVID about multiple ways to pulling family.
A hundred percent. I think that's, that's going to be some of, some of the best learnings that we've had during COVID outside of health and safety is how to, how do we engage community and in this new format? And I'll be interested to see what they, it looks like on the site level. So I look forward to hearing what that looks like in the future as you guys plan that out. But thank you very much for your presentation. It was very great.
Thank you.
Thank you, member Rhodes. Member Phillips. You have nothing? Okay. I just want to say thank you. A really exciting opportunity for students at these sites. So thank you for your work on this. This is an action item, so can I get a motion? All right. I have a motion and a second student preferential vote. All right, superintendent roll call.
Member Pritchett.
Aye.
Member Morowski. Member Wu. Member Garcia. Member Villa.
Aye.
Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Great, thank you. All right, item 9.2 revised board policy 5145.3.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. Thank you, sorry. Thank you. It's so awkward on Zoom. Thank you for your work. All right, 9.2 revised board policy 5145.31 transgender and gender non-conforming students. Mr. Bozio, this is our second reading or a second, second reading plus action. Yeah.
There we go. That's a green light means, there we go.
That might help.
That might help. Perfect. Especially with the mask. Okay. Go ahead and move to the next slide. As we discussed at the previous board meeting, this policy is being brought forward as it requires a little bit of update. Last time it was adopted and, and hence reviewed by the board was 2018. The policy is meant to comply with state and federal law, including education code 221.5 that provides that students shall be permitted to participate in sex segregated school programs and activities and use the facility as consistent with their gender identity and should not be discriminated from any of the educational programs and activities due to their sex, gender, sexual orientation, gender identity expression. Next slide. So the policy is intended to ensure the safety, comfort, healthy development of our transgender, gender non-conforming students while maximizing the students' social integration in school setting and minimizing stigmatization. In revisions, comply with the language provided in the education code and set out guidelines for district staff to follow in order to address needs. Next slide. The key updates and revisions in this policy include the non-binary gender markers being included on our infinite campus student information system, a general statement on non-binary inclusion, and the provision regarding schools, direction to schools provide non-gendered address codes. That's all I have for you, so I can take any questions or comments.
All right. We do not have any public comment on this item. Is there any board comment? All right, with that, a lengthy motion to approve. I have a motion and a second student preferential vote. All right, superintendent roll call.
Member Pritchett.
Aye.
Member Morowski.
Aye.
Member Wu.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Villa.
Aye.
Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Fantastic. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bozio.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to go back to 8.1 now, superintendent.
Yes, member Pritchett and board members, I'd like to go back to 8.1. We had to make some slight additions to that presentation that we will want to discuss with the board and our community. So with that, I'm going to ask our team to start by way of introduction, board members. We did an update of our reopening at the last board meeting. It was a fairly long presentation. If you remember, this one is shorter as we are just wanting to give you updates on relevant items that we believe you should be aware of and that our community should also be aware of. So treat this more as an update to the first update from two weeks ago.
And good evening. I'm Christine Beata, your chief academic officer, and this is our happy first day of school board presentation. So I'd like to start by saying first, first and foremost, thank you to everybody. If you were out at any of our schools today, you were able to see the cross department and incredible work happening at our sites because of the work of everybody coming together. Next slide, please. Everything as we know that we do is anchored to our core value and our guiding principle. And last time that we were together with this presentation, we talked a little bit about keeping the main thing, the main thing. And now let's take a look on our very first day of school, what is the main thing? Next slide, please. These have been really hard 18 months for our kids. But today, they finally came back and they came back together for the first time after nearly two years apart and two academic years of interrupted learning. And I want you all to get to see what we saw today. We saw kindergarteners with tears and hugs and excitement and smiles. Next slide, please. We saw pride from our families, from our staff, from our community and our kids. And I heard so many times the children telling me they were so happy to be at school. Parents were happy. Next slide, please. We also saw pride in our kids and we saw recess. We saw recess. We heard recess. We saw safe passing periods with kids walking in the hall, smiling at each other and getting to talk to their friends for the first time in a very, very long time. We saw welcoming opportunities that our school sites created to really help every single person feel like this was the very best first day ever. Next slide, please. We saw our administrators, we saw our teachers, and we saw our staff coming together to joyfully welcome kids and to welcome each other. I saw staff really enjoying the opportunity to be in space with each other as they were with kids. And I did hear them say many times that they were just so happy to see the children right there on campus. Next slide, please. We are so grateful because today what we really saw, we saw love. We saw our community, we saw our community coming together. And I just want to say to our board and to our entire staff and all of our community, thank you so much. It has been a really hard two years, but today we came back and we came back together. So thank you so much. You'll hear some more tonight about reopening and a little bit of update. And now I'm going to turn it over to Victoria in Student Support and Health Services where one of our updates is up to the minute. Thank you, Victoria. I bet she's somewhere trying to log on.
Sorry, no, I'm here. I think I was muted. The classic, classic, you're on mute. Sorry about that, board and superintendent. It's been a long day. So as Christine, so just did such a beautiful job of showing us what it looked like at school. We saw many of the, these layers of safety in those photos, lots of face masks. And we're all getting good at, at seeing smiles in our eyes as we smile behind our face masks, but we're always going to stay grounded in these layers of safety. And so tonight I'm just going to take you through some of the updates that, that revolve around this. So next slide, please. So Sat County Public Health did issue some supplemental guidance just this week, August 29th. And I'm really happy to say that Sat City is doing all of these and, or planning to do them as we get more guidance. So face masking indoors and outdoors, they're strongly recommending it and we are requiring it in our district. We listened, we heard, and we want to do everything we can to, to keep our, our community as safe as possible. They also reiterated that face mask exemptions are very rare and they're actually seeing some concerning face mask exemptions. And so they're asking us to report anything that doesn't, doesn't seem legitimate. And so they gave a special alert on that. Of course, physical distancing for our specialty service providers, we already have that written into our plan. You saw pictures of mealtime and really encouraging mealtime outdoors with distancing. And Diana Flores walked you through some of that in our last presentation. This is a new one, the poor air quality days, they're, you know, asking that we limit those outdoor activities, closed doors and windows. We immediately jumped into questions and actually real-time pivot. We have a meeting, you know, tomorrow morning with the air quality management board and Sat County Public Health and all of our schools so that we can really create a uniform standard for when air quality mitigation kind of overrides COVID mitigation. We just want to make sure we're doing the safest thing possible. So we'll be coming back with that one. Of course, schools are encouraged to provide rapid testing and we do that at all of our school sites right now and our central office as well as PCR testing. We report our close, our cases and our close contacts to the county. They are really encouraging us to provide routine surveillance testing for athletes. And I'm really proud to say we have continued to do this since spring of last year. We've continued to test our athletes all throughout the summer, really strongly encouraging it, providing it right then and there when they come to practice so we make it really easy. And our athletes and our coaches have been amazing and they have stepped right up and they encourage that testing as well. And then, of course, you've heard a lot about our vaccine events that are continuing to go on. So next slide, please. And then just late last night, actually, CDPH issued some new guidance around extracurricular activities that are based at schools. So they're including clubs and sports and anything that's, you know, on a school campus or supervised by schools, no matter where it's hosted. So of course, masks are required for indoors, we're already doing that. They gave some specific guidance about musical instruments, particularly wind instruments, and, and some guidance that you have to follow, conducting these outdoors, which we'd already been doing. They are going to allow those modified face coverings now and bell coverings, which we actually have on order. And I know we, I think we have some of them and more are coming. Or you can do weekly testing, which of course we're also offering and encouraging. So they're giving schools some, some decisions there. You also, if you're going to be indoors with those face coverings, though, also have to be physical distancing. And we are already in compliance with testing because we have that availability. Next slide, please. Just another reminder about universal face masking. We can't say it enough, indoors and outdoors now on all of our district locations, really asking all of our families and students as they're approaching our school campuses to make sure those face coverings are on. And then, of course, as they're leaving that they keep those on as well. And we continue to replace them throughout the day. We will, we will continue to do so. Next slide, please. You've also heard a lot about testing. We're, we're at, we're actually over 23,000 tests now. We continue to test daily here at the Serna Center and we do have our rapid and our PCR available right now. You can go next slide and they'll talk about some of our pre-entry testing that we did. So this August, you know, we were mostly doing pre-entry testing or sports testing. And as some of our schools came back, we've provided over 6,000 tests. It's one of the biggest months that we've had and we hadn't even opened school yet. So we're testing about 15% of our total district population. We held pre-entry testing on two days, August 30th and 31st. We tested about 16, a little over 1,600 people. And when you factored in September 1st, we hit over 2,000 because by September 1st, we had testing out at all of our school sites as well as here centrally at the Serna Center. And I know everyone's really interested in wanting us to do even more testing. And so we really wanted to benchmark, how are we doing compared to the county? So if you'll see on the left here, we've got Sat County Public Health. This comes from their dashboard in a specific week that they published. So I just benchmarked this exact week to our testing dashboard in primary. And so when you look at the total test with the population, they're testing about 3.5% of the population and we're a little bit ahead of that at 3.8 and we hadn't even reopened schools yet. And, but when you look at the positivity rate, this is something I want our, our community and the board to really notice. Sat County Public Health sitting at 8.4. We know we're in this fourth wave. Our positivity rate, even with all that pre-entry testing and testing people who we know have had exposures is still sitting at 1.8. So you see that's quite a difference away. And that's because of those layered mitigation measures and all the things we're doing to stop the spread of COVID. Next slide, please. So this leads us into, you know, that consideration that the board spoke really passionately about. We know that community members have as well around mandating testing for our students. We know that's part of the public health order for our staff. And so last week I was able to reach out and speak with four individuals from LA Unified and they really did it exactly how we are doing it. They scaled up from voluntary testing throughout the district and then went to a mandate. They, they expanded their testing out to localized areas. They weren't at every single school site because LA Unified is really massive, but they made sure that they had lots of testing in those different geographical areas. And then they created teams of testers that would rotate through schools. They do though require testing for attending in person. There are no exceptions to their, their testing mandate. So they were pretty clear on that. And they were really open and honest. And so some things for us to consider as we look at, you know, doing this in our district would be, are we going to consider vaccination or not, much like the public health order for, for education workers? Of course, we want to talk about consent and how we're going to do that process. How parents can report their results should they choose to do a different kind of test or want to test with their provider? Staffing up our rotating testing teams, we've already been deployed staff from CDPH and, and are putting those teams into rotation. They did our pre-entry testing and so we're working with them to staff those teams up even more. We will keep our onsite health aides and their focus will remain symptomatic testing and exposure testing. They're pretty busy already with that. And then one of the things LA Unified said they wish they knew, if they could go back, was really scaling up their contact tracing capacity. They really underestimated that and that hit them hard. So it was really lovely to be able to learn from them. Next slide, please. One of the other things we just wanted to make our, our board aware of as we're testing everyone and we're looking at mandated testing, you maybe have read or heard about this in the national news, that, that there is a shortage on the rapid antigen test specifically by next now. That's the one that CDPH had a contract with and is providing to us for free. And so at this time, we have an order in and it looks like we're going to get that. And I'll just say we ordered a lot because we knew we were going to scale up our testing. So fingers crossed that should So, fingers crossed, that should be coming into us. We're in daily contact with CDPH. They are, of course, trying to pivot and get as many test kits as they can and be responsive. However, if we do exhaust them, that's okay. We're going to keep using them as we need to right now. We'll just pivot to PCR tests. That's what we did last year. We had PCR-only capability. We're ready to do that again, and we're also scaling up our orders of PCR tests, too. Next slide, please. So, I always feel like I have to come back to vaccination. 22,653, we had another 72 people come to our clinic last night. Lots of first timers getting a first dose, so it's always kind of touching. We will be continuing our vaccine clinics with Dr. Carter. She's willing to go beyond September 8th. We might need to adjust our dates and times, but we will get that out to our community. The one thing I really wanted to point out, I got this from a PowerPoint on the California Safe Schools website, that unvaccinated individuals are 11 times more likely to get COVID. Yes, we are seeing breakthrough cases with vaccination, but that really just stopped me. 11 times more likely. So, we do really just encourage our community to please reconsider. If you're vaccine hesitant, come down, talk to Dr. Carter, talk to one of your school nurses. They really are safe and they really do protect our community. Next slide, please. And so, some heartening news about vaccination. This is our vaccine verification for employees. And so, as of August 30th, we had about a 64% return rate. And tonight, Jay Elmquist, he's such a rock star in IT who's helped launch this process, we're at 67% tonight. And we hit that mark of 60% of our staff are fully vaccinated and submitted their vaccine verification. Of course, we're still going to go through those and vet them. But that's really nice to know that we're benchmarking with the community. Roughly about 7%, you know, not vaccinated, 3% declined to state. So, we're looking at about 60% of our staff will need to COVID test, and we'll be prepared to do that. And they can continue to submit their vaccine verification. There's no end date to that. We really want to encourage that. Next slide, please. Also, wanted to just take a note about our contact tracing procedures. And I really want to say thank you, thank you, thank you to our community and our site leaders. I'm really grateful for everyone who stayed home today and notified their site administrator that they had either tested positive or they had had an exposure. We were somewhat overwhelmed with these, but also heartened that our community knew what to do and really was mindful of protecting or came up and got testing, because maybe they were symptomatic. So, we have our procedures in place, we continue to reinforce them. And we have about approximately 20 contact tracing staff. We have some new staff just start today. And we're continuing to train and onboard them, so that we have that capacity to respond. We also did a training for all of our site administrators about the contact tracing process. We recorded it, we did some written procedures, so that they can really be comfortable with understanding what's going to go on and why. And so, one of the real-time updates I want to provide to our community and our board is as a result of all of our increased testing that we're having right now, we've had, you know, we had a number of positive cases at New Joseph Bonheim. This is one of our dependent charter schools that's been open since August 9th. So, it's important to note, they've been open for just about a month. And they do sit in one of those zip codes, 95820, that has quite a high case count right now. Around 460 new cases in the past 30 days, so we know there's outbreak happening in that community. And so, we had a number of cases, starting almost from the very first day of school, community transmission. And then, this morning, we had a number of other new positive cases. So, following our protocols, we immediately reached out to SAC County Public Health. We consulted, we provided them with a lot of information, just really trying to make sure we're doing the best thing that we can. And so, they did issue us an order tonight, actually saying that we need to mandatorily test everyone on campus tomorrow, all staff and all students, so that then we can reassess what's going on on that community. Is it community spread? Very likely. You know, are we seeing any kind of spread in the school? We don't think so, we're not sure. We really want to do everything we can to keep our community safe. So, we will be doing rapid antigen testing out there. That team of testers I talked about from CDPH will be redeploying over there and setting up and working their way through all of those classrooms. So, we're really grateful to be able to have that capacity and to be able to have that relationship with our public health to help us guide and stay safe. Next slide, please. We just, we wanted to come back to these for our community. They are in our Return to Health Plan, in our appendices. And tomorrow, you know, based on what's happening at New Joseph Bonheim or any other school, these are the decision trees that we follow, and these are the processes that we follow. If someone's symptomatic or test positive, they've had an exposure at school, like tree number two takes us through, or it's that exposure in the community, like tree number three takes us through. Next slide, please. We also did some real-time updates to our dashboard. I believe one of our board members had called out how another district had a mapping function. And so, our amazing IT team figured out how to create that and include that mapping function. Yes, kudos to real-time pivots, and we have that on our dashboard. You can view that at reopeningdashboard.scusd.edu. And if you hover on our main page, there's a COVID banner. It'll come right up, and you can click on the dashboard there. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our Facilities and Operations Team. Excellent.
Good evening, members of board superintendent. Update from the Facilities Department, some of it refreshed from last time. Custodial Operations Team will continue our cleaning practices based on updated guidance from all of our health and safety experts, which include regular disinfecting high-touch areas, enhanced cleaning and disinfecting in spaces where known cases have been. We've obtained special tools and machines to make sure that we clean all aspects of the space, including foggers and electrostatic sprayers that will clean on top of and underneath the furniture in the room and reach into the ductwork of any ventilation system for these deep cleanings. But daily, our standard cleaning program will make up a majority of our time in the school and in the office setting to ensure that we keep the spaces used by our students and staff ready to use and safe. Next slide, please. As mentioned during the last board meeting, I want to again highlight the Facilities Team efforts on wrapping up a large project that included a tune-up and as necessary, pair of all the units in the school district to ensure that they are working as efficiently as possible. This included a disinfection of the unit. We're also beginning our scheduled change, unscheduled change of the filters in the units, continuing our use of upgraded MERV 13 filters. This will be our third change of filters in the district since the standard began. And we've already begun the process of securing order, securing our order for the fourth change when that time comes. We'll also be using the data gathered during the summer work to identify future projects that will help improve indoor air quality for our spaces using available funding identified for this purpose. Next slide, please. We are working with both Ms. Flores and Health Services and our county and air quality management partners to find new parameters and guidance on best practices for poor air days and ventilation systems. On the screen, you were, some initial ideas that will help guide our site leaders and teachers on what to do when air quality is an issue. We're going to discuss what our units are capable of doing and then also using the expert's guidance that, as you heard earlier, the morning, tomorrow morning, having a meeting on the subject should provide some clarity, and then we'll advertise that out. I'm pleased to introduce my colleague Nathaniel Browning here in Facilities to provide an update to our civic permit process.
Nathaniel. Good evening, board and superintendent. I wanted to give a quick update on civic permits within the district. Currently, a limited number of civic permits are being approved at this time due to the ongoing pandemic and the high level of case counts within the area. The only permits being accepted at this time include district contracted after-school programs, student testing opportunities such as SAT, ACT, outdoor activities requested by outside entities, and any vaccination efforts, of course. Programs that will not be approved at this time include all requests for indoor use by community groups or entities. This is also in line with the district's current restrictions on having parents or volunteers on sites during the school day as well. And lastly, all civic permit approvals allowed at this time require an additional COVID-19 mitigation plan and an addendum for all applicants before facility use can be approved. And now, I'd like to turn it over to my colleague Diana Flores. Next slide, please.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to update you on two topics related to nutrition. The first being our first curbside meal pickup that we started yesterday here at the central kitchen for our CAP City enrolled families. Because the CAP City enrollments are in flux, we are communicating every Monday to our new CAP City enrolled students. And families can pick up a week's worth of breakfast and lunch at one stop. Next slide. And secondly, I want to talk a little bit about our outdoor seating. I know there was a lot of conversation about the picnic tables. There was an assessment done by facilities. 568 picnic tables are already at our school site, and 1,500 commercial-grade tables should arrive, but it will take approximately 15 weeks. In the meantime, risk management and our district purchasing office secured 5,400 carpet squares. And since I made this slide, the dates changed briefly. The carpet squares did arrive today, and the yoga mats, 8,000 yoga mats also arrived today. The yoga mats arrived today early and before lunchtime. And I just want to say a huge shout-out to Facilities Team. Within a few minutes of the truck arriving, we had 15 facilities, staff members from grounds maintenance to the trades workers, all pulled up, grabbed enough yoga mats for some priority schools identified that needed them and deployed them out before lunch service today. It was actually a great piece of teamwork and cross-collaborative work between departments, and it was a great thing to see. We now have ample stock in our warehouse, and they will be available to replace or to be ordered by any school site going forward. And that's it at this time, next slide.
Good evening, school board members and superintendent Aguilar. I am Tiffany Smith Simmons, here to give an update on human resources. Currently, our classroom vacancies are at 33, nine of which are elementary classrooms and 24 secondary classrooms. We are holding seven teachers to their contract. And what that means is CTC has guidelines that require us to notice teachers that they must remain in their classroom under contract until we release them. We typically hold teachers to their contracts until they, we are able to find a suitable replacement after August 1st, if they notice us of their intent to resign. Of these vacancies listed, 18 of those vacancies we've found or learned, sorry, after August 1st, and 15 of them we learned as of July 1st. Next slide. I wanted to share with you a breakdown of those vacancies that are highlighted on the first slide. 13 of the vacancies are special education classrooms. We have two physical education teacher vacancies, five English, one social science, three math, two at the multiple subject level or elementary school, and three science and four foreign language classroom teachers. I wanted to also highlight, while I'm speaking of classroom vacancies, we do have about 80 non-classroom vacancies as well. And those include nurses, speech and language pathologists, and psychologists. We will continue to work to fill these vacancies, and we do recognize the nationwide educator shortage in some of these crucial areas. Next slide. And we wouldn't have first day of school if we didn't share with the board and the community our substitute data. Today, we have 110 certificated substitute requests. But I wanted to share with the board that that's in line with previous first-day schools. Last school year, you might remember, we were in a pandemic, and so, the number was significantly lower. But in the previous years, it's been in line with about 100, 110 certificated substitutes. And I would like to highlight for the board, those reasons run the gamut to the entitlements that teachers have. They could be on FMLA, they could be ill today, on personal necessity or haparrethema. It's a number of reasons why our teachers were absent today. Next slide.
There you go. Good evening, everybody. Chad Swites are here to give you an update on our AB 130 efforts. Just want to start by saying, we spent the day out at CAP City today, enrolling students, meeting with parents. Definitely want to thank Mr. Amerine, the principal, and the amazing staff over at CAP City, doing amazing job of greeting parents, making phone calls, et cetera. And then, also, we had several CERNAS staff who all worked from CAP City today. So, just want to give a quick thanks to Dr. Sims, Azarelle Nigas, Melanie Bean, Dr. Smith Simmons, Monica Garland, and Melinda Chambers. Everybody out at the site today, making phone calls, greeting parents, and helping any way we could. So, just thank you, everybody who showed up this afternoon, this morning. Also, want to take a moment just to thank our site leaders and all the office staff who are impacted by AB 130. We know you're all trying to support students with short-term independent study, getting students disenrolled as quickly as you can for me. And I just want to thank you very much. I know it's stressful. Hopefully, seeing kids today put a smile on your face and just know that we greatly appreciate you. I hope you're home getting some rest. And for the parents, I know you're all so stressed and frustrated. Please know we're enrolling students as quickly as possible and doing our best to communicate with you. Hopefully, you'll get a call from Mr. Amerine as quickly as possible to get enrolled. So, as of this afternoon, we had about 2,100 students still showing interest in attending. And after the webinar this past Tuesday on the 31st, we did send out a questionnaire to the families who had shown interest, asking them to verify their enrollment. As of this afternoon, we did have about 1175 who had confirmed that they do want to attend CAP City during AB 130. Next slide. So, as parents are verifying that they want to attend CAP City, we're enrolling them as quickly as possible based on the staffing and waiting for that to be adjusted. We are having staff at the current school in CAP City complete checkouts and enrollments for the parents. So, for example, today, I was emailing other school sites, asking them to disenroll students and keep records as we've asked them to. And the registrar at CAP City was getting students enrolled. Students who have confirmed they want to enroll into CAP City under AB 130 need to remain at their school site on that short-term independent study until the enrollment process is finalized. And sites are currently following their past practices for short-term independent study. Next slide. Just a reminder that AB 130 does identify the type and frequency of instruction by grade, and I have them listed there. Early kinder through third graders will receive daily synchronous instruction. Fourth through sixth graders will receive daily live interaction and weekly synchronous instruction. Middle schoolers will receive daily live interaction and weekly synchronous. And then, the high school students in ninth through 12 will receive weekly synchronous instruction. And essentially, elementary students, they take instruction in their four core academic classes. And then, secondary students generally take two classes at a time. One is a core class, and then the other would be an elective or PE course. Next slide. And then, students with exceptional needs, we know they may not participate in independent study until the IEP team specifically provides for that participation. During the IEP meeting, the team is responsible to determine if the student can independently access their curriculum, provide the special education services agreed upon in the last IEP, and still make adequate progress towards their goal in the independent study environment. And some of those factors that the team considers are, you know, what are the educational and academic benefits of independent study versus in-person learning? You know, what's the age of the student, their maturity? What are the independence level? What are their needs on their IEP goals? Can they make progress in an independent study learning program? And then, what are some of the academic and social benefits of each program? You know, what are the emotional needs of the student? And can they meet, have those needs met, sitting at home in an independent study learning? And then, how will the students be able to access, virtually, access to special education services? Thank you, and I'll turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Hanson.
Good evening, superintendent and board members. Thank you, Chad. I'm Erin Hanson, superintendent of, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. As you know, this week, we provided two days of professional learning to our As you know, this week, we provided two days of professional learning to our more than 2,300 certificated staff. And following our MOU, we devoted our first day, as you can see here on this slide, to building teacher capacity for a restorative restart and to site-based work. And the second day to anti-racism learning and reflection with our partner Epic Education. I know you've probably heard some mixed feedback about the last two days, so I'm here to share a few details with you. Using our UDL, Principal's Universal Design for Learning, we designed our PL so that it would allow teachers to engage flexibly throughout the two days to work at their own pace and make choices around content and their preferred learning modality. So for example, they could read an article or watch a video and follow that with opportunities to put their learning into practice. In order to provide this flexibility, we made the PL available on our teach.scusd.edu website, along with how-to videos and written directions for accessing and navigating both our Power School and the Epic platforms. Today, our CNI team conducted an analysis of our teaching and learning outcomes from the last two days using data and anecdotal evidence to identify what worked and how we will improve moving forward. As I'll explain in just a moment, we did encounter some significant technical difficulties, but first, I want to highlight several pieces of good news. Next slide, please. So 70% to our day one engage, explore, and choose, 70% of our educators have completed the engage and explore session. So that grounded our work in centering relationships and guided teachers to both access and analyze their student data to better understand and meet the needs of their student. 60% of them have completed the choose section in which they self-selected modules to improve the rigor and relevance of teaching and learning based on their teaching assignment and/or their student needs. And based on our data that we've received from Epic, 83% of our educators have either partially or fully completed Epic's compassionate dialogue module. We received a lot of different kind of feedback from our teachers. We heard that the day one explore and engage session was filled with purposeful learning and that the guidance for accessing and analyzing student data was both timely and relevant. They appreciated the self-peace and independent structure of both days and the opportunity to choose from a range of relevant content as they were starting the school year. They, we heard from teachers that they were accessing some of their data points for the first time, and we heard from site leaders and training specialists today that we're hearing from teachers asking for more data and more support. So great steps in the right direction. Along with this positive feedback, we also received a number of suggestions about how to improve our professional learning in general, and specifically the need to do better to meet the needs of our deaf and hard-of-hearing educators as well as our child development educators. So there's work there in terms of growing our practices around UDL to ensure that we as model educators are doing that for the adults in our system. And as you know, we encountered some serious technical difficulties, particularly with regards to communication and the accuracy of our email distribution lists, as well as platform access and knowledge. As soon as we discovered these, we began working to remedy them, but we did leave some of our educators feeling frustrated on their final days of preparation for the school year, which was the opposite of what we intended to do for them. So to that end, we extended the deadline for completing the sessions to October 1st for all educators, which we then communicated, communicated system-wide yesterday. Lastly, I want to thank our CNI team and our tech team for their efforts to bring these learning opportunities to our teachers. And thank you to our site leaders and teachers for your patience and perseverance over the last couple of days. Now that our kids and teachers are back in school, we are excited to begin building our instructional vision and our long-term professional learning plan so that we are aligned with MTSS and better supporting our adults and improving outcomes for our students. I think that is the end of our presentation. Shall I hand it back over to chief academic officer Bieda?
Well, I'd be honored. Thank you so much, and thank you to our CNI team. Amazing, amazing work. And we'll turn that now off and back to the board for any questions or public comments.
Thank you, staff. We, we have 17 live public comments tonight. We want to hear from each and every one of our community members. I'm going to ask that each of you, please keep your comments to two minutes. We will give you the full two minutes, but please, 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 please keep them to two minutes. And if you find that a speaker before you just said the same thing, if you could please not repeat what the commenter before you had said, we want to make sure we hear from each of you. All right, Ms. Murety, first speaker?
Yes, our first speaker is Anthony Mistry.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Mistry. I'm a parent of two children at SCUSD. I have two grievances tonight. First, the district's development of an independent study program is unacceptably late. Just an overview of the independent study program was shared with students and family a mere 36 hours before the start of the school year. And from the limited information presented, it's obvious that the actual details are still being figured out. Our children deserve a meaningful and safe education starting on day one of the school year. Other districts have been able to figure this out. Why hasn't SCUSD? Second, COVID is an evolving disease. CDC guidelines recommend that the district monitor local conditions to help guide decisions regarding mitigation strategies. It's likely that over the next year, the district will have to pivot multiple times to best serve students as conditions change. During this process, it's imperative that the district realize that the risk of COVID is not uniformly low for all individuals, particularly for racial and ethnic minorities and those with medical conditions. Thus far, the district has not demonstrated an understanding of these concepts. You may consider this comment as my statement of no confidence in Mr. Aguilar's ability to properly manage the district's day-to-day affairs. In addition, I am upset that the school board has stood by while this comedy of errors has unfolded. I'm calling on the school board tonight to urgently reevaluate its vision and priorities, particularly with regard to ensuring that inadequate educational services are available to all students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Cassandra Hoff.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. My name is Cassandra Hoff. I am the mother of two children at Phoebe Hurst. Given the overwhelming interest in independent study, I would like the school board to establish a robust virtual learning option. Elk Grove and Davis have provided a virtual learning academy. Why can't the same be done here? LA Unified recently announced they would be live streaming classes. Why can't the same be done here? I implore the school board to look at virtual learning not as a one-off situation only used during the pandemic. It should be seen as an investment. Virtual learning can be used in a number of situations, even beyond the pandemic, to minimize learning loss and serve students. It can be a tool for students with disabilities to keep up with their class. It can be used during natural disasters and wildfires, and during toxic air quality days. We already have the technology. Rather than abandoning it, let's improve it and fully integrate it into our, into our classrooms. Virtual learning should be a tool in the toolkit to provide the best possible opportunities for our children. That concludes my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoff. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Sid Jahori.
Hello again. Can, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Hi. Okay, sorry, my computer connection is very bad tonight. I just wanted to really quickly reiterate my strong support for surveillance testing. Based on what was shared during the presentation, it looks as the district, the district is looking to larger districts examples, which are a lot more rigorous, and, and testing being mandatory at LAUSD is, in order to return in person is a prime example of that. So I'm, I'm encouraged to hear that. However, I do need to alert you that even though we're talking about wins such as weekly testing being on sites, there's still a lot of mixed messaging happening. For example, during our recent onsite presentation, our principals shared that weekly testing and even potentially even daily testing would be possible for us. However, one of our parents contacted the nurse the following day during, during testing and was told that parents would have to alert teachers that they had signed up for this and ask that their students be sent to this testing rather than them being sent automatically, and that the testing would only be available every other week on Monday and Thursday. You know, these are, there just seems to be still a lot of confusion and miscommunication throughout all levels within the district. And so while I, I'm happy to hear that, that this is top of mind and moving forward, it's, it's still got a lot of work to do. In addition, I do want to caution us when we're looking at those SAC County versus school testing, you know, people who approach a SAC County test, testing site are utilizing that typically because they have some concern or some inkling that they may have, may have had contact with COVID. I know that myself, my own family and several other families approached the testing on school sites simply to be a responsible member of the community and make sure that we hadn't, we ourselves had had no known exposure. So while I'm, I love the idea that we might be seven points below what's experienced in the county, I wouldn't, I wouldn't lean on those numbers too heavily.
Thank you, Ms. Jahori, if you could please wrap it up. Oh, what, thank you. Caught you right at the end there. All right, next speaker?
Yes, our next speaker is Dana Grimes, and she is combining time with Michelle Hunan.
Thank you. Four minutes on the clock. Thank you.
Good evening, board members and SAC City community. My name is Dana Grimes, and I proudly teach third grade at Sutterville Elementary School. I'm here as a very disappointed teacher. On Tuesday evening, the district had webinars for parents interested in the long-term independent program. And at that webinar, district staff instructed parents to remain at their homeschool in a short-term independent study while the district continued to work on finalizing the program at Capital City. The district also said that at your homeschool, your, your child's teacher would prepare materials for your child as they wait patiently for Cap City program to be up and running. That must have felt awful and very disrespectful. As I write this statement, it is the day before school starts. I have not been notified or asked to help with materials for these important student requests. This doesn't sound like the superintendent that is always publicly stating how he values collaboration. If I were a superintendent, my email to staff would go something like this. Dear teaching staff, I'm reaching out to you to ask for help. I realize this is late notice, and I apologize for this, but we're having difficulty opening our long-term independent study program and need a few weeks to finalize things. So I'd like to ask you to provide materials for your students in this program. And as a thank you for all your hard work, the district will pay your contractually hourly rate, and we understand that the typical short-term independent study program that you are familiar with is voluntary, but would appreciate in the spirit of collaboration if you would please consider helping. Thanks so much, your superintendent. But because we not have, we have not been treated respectfully, the staff at my school is saying no to this voluntary program. And I truly hope, as others have stated in their public comments, that we can work in collaboration, like we all hope to, and say, at least in the public forum. So thanks for listening. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Grimes. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is David Fisher, and he is combining time with Nikki Malewski, Cindy Stewart, and Robert Lynn.
Good evening. So I've been a teacher in this district since 1996. Since I began teaching, like most teachers, I've always found the first day of school to be one of the most exciting days of the year. Students are exciting and nervous to be in the classroom, as are the teachers, especially those who are attending school for the first time. Of course, this year is significant, especially because of the pandemic. Typical excitement and nervousness this year is also compounded by the surging of the Delta variant, which is much more dangerous to the unvaccinated, particularly children. Since the pandemic began, teachers have stepped up for their students. When the district provided no direction on how to instruct students in the spring of 2020, teachers reached out and taught students, even when the district directed them not to. When students and parents struggled to connect virtually, teachers stepped in to help, even when the district threatened to take legal action against any teachers trying to help. When the school year resumed virtually in 2020, teachers worked with the school site principals to develop a distance learning plan that worked to the best extent possible for students, even when the district refused to sign an MOU. When the district wasted $6 million in unproven and potentially dangerous air filters in preparation for the return to in-person instruction, teachers fought for and won industry-standard portable air filters and CO2 monitors over the objections of the district. And when in-person classes resumed, once again, our teachers taught both in-person and virtually concurrently, because that's what our students needed at that time. Back in the spring, we urged the district to please create a virtual learning academy like surrounding districts. The district refused. And for months, our bargaining team, which is consisted of over 80 educators throughout the district, has been meeting with the district urging them to work with us so that students could return as safely as possible. And for those who could not return, there was a viable virtual option. Since the pandemic, teachers have shown up for their students. It's time that you, the school board, do the same. Teachers continue to meet throughout their summer break for hours and hours, almost late, always, often late in the evening, only to face a district team that was completely unprepared, unable to answer simple questions, and without the authority to make decisions. Although the superintendent refused to attend a single meeting, the district's bargaining team repeatedly assured us, including on Monday of this week, that the district was, quote, "totally prepared for classes to start," September 2nd. That turned out not to be true. After a five-year fight, the district finally agreed to provide implicit bias, anti-racist training to all certificated staff, with Board policy 5144 that Superintendent Aguilar ignored for the entirety of the tenure. The training was supposed to occur yesterday, only hundreds of staff couldn't complete the training because of the district's technical difficulties. These technical difficulties, including having to wait for the district to notify staff and provide login instruction, inexplicably, the night before the professional development was scheduled to begin, and then the logins didn't work for large numbers of teachers. After today, it's not just the teachers who understand how irresponsibly unprepared the district actually is. The parents who have the legal right to have the district provide an alternative to in-person instruction as required by state law, AB 130, are fully aware that Superintendent Aguilar and chief academic officer Bieda have not been honest with them. And as I mentioned earlier, way back in the spring, we urged the district to create a virtual learning academy, to provide an alternative to students unable to return in-person instruction. For whatever reason, the district refused. Then on July 9th, AB 130 was signed into law requiring California school districts to offer all-student students an independent study option for those unable to return in-person instruction. On July 22nd, after our repeated request to discuss options for students who were unable to return to the in-person instruction, the district brought assistant superintendent Matt Turkey to bargaining. Mr. Turkey reportedly was responsible for developing the independent study program, and he stated that he was working directly with the superintendent on the program. Mr. Turkey brought no proposal, had no plan, and had no answers. The next time we met, Mr. Turkey was no longer employed by the district. After we made three separate proposals on virtual learning options, the first going back to June 8th, finally, on August 19th, 2021, two weeks before classes were scheduled to begin, and 10 days after classes had already begun at two schools, the district made its first incomplete proposal on independent study. When we met with the district again on Monday at the conclusion of the bargaining, we stated that we were available to meet with the district this week before classes started on Thursday to address concerns around health and safety in independent study. Since then, the district has not responded to our offer to try to mitigate SAC City's failure to have Cap City ready to go for independent study. We raised serious concerns about the district's need to fill certificated vacancies and to hire additional staff to provide independent study instruction. The Elk Grove Unified School District, for example, responded to the teacher shortage by agreeing to a 4% across-the-board increase with an additional 2% bonus, air increasing the pay of substitutes to $350 a day. In contrast, in SAC City, the district is responding to teacher shortage by demanding a cut of an average of $750 per month in teachers' take-home pay, a cut this school board is on the record as supporting. More than 2,000 students have expressed interest in independent study, hundreds more are surely to come. It's clear the district has overpromised and is unable to deliver, despite Despite repeated promises, the district had not been able to begin independent study for those students. Now apparently the district intends to have those students receive a short-term independent study through their homeschool for the first two weeks of classes, while it tries to get the independent study through CAP City up and running. This quote plan is being conceived at the discernment center, again with no input from teachers. We reiterated our offer to collaborate with the district to work through how best to provide instruction to our students during the period of crisis. We have urged you as a board to send representatives to negotiations that you can be sure that the district is being appropriately represented and so that you can see for yourself what's happening at the bargaining table. Mr. Aguilar and the district's bargaining team, led by an outside consultant, an outside law firm, tried to deflect the criticism of their inability to develop a plan by claiming there's a labor dispute. The real dispute is that there's no leadership coming from the district and you as a school board are not accepting your responsibility to lead. Teachers continue to show up, continue to teach our students and remain willing to work with the district, navigate through this crisis. Teachers are showing up. When will you? When will you let the teachers help? We are more than ready. Thank you.
Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Julie Del Agua.
Good evening, Julie.
Hello, good evening. I have something prepared, but before I start, I wanted to say something. I'm a little disappointed in as some of the speakers are speaking, board members maybe unconsciously shaking your head no left and right. Makes me wonder if you're really truly hearing what the public is saying or some board members talking during while they're speaking. And via Zoom, it's very difficult then to hear the other people talking when you guys are talking. So I'm going to try and be as quick as possible. Um, I have been working for weeks trying to get my room ready for my students for today, the first day of school. Normally I'm super excited, but today, not so much. Having a little bit of inflated feelings. Why, you ask? Well, I attended the Independent Study Parent Forum mainly because I don't get information from the district. I have to attend parent forums in order to find out what my responsibilities of, of, as an employee is or what the district's telling parents that we as teachers are going to do instead of communicating directly with us. Um, I listened to, um, the frustration of parents um, asking for help for their child. There were many students that didn't come to school today, who did not get their education today because the district isn't prepared. And that is literally your job. That is your only job. Is to make sure that our schools are ready to educate students. Not only that, but the stress of the errors with emails and PLs and so many other things, they have expansion exponentially increased over the last several years. The problems that go on and on. I don't think you guys understand the stress and mental harm that you are causing to your employees. I don't know how much longer I can take it. I have pulled my oldest son from the district because of that. You need to understand the harm that you're causing not only to your employees, but to the families, community, and especially the students. We have to do better. We have to.
Thank you, Ms. Del Agua. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Ingrid Hutchins.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, um, I'm following up pretty much on the same type of situation that Ju- Julie was just explaining. Um, I'm coming to as a teacher who has been very stressed over the past few weeks. And I'm coming to represent my, um, community of colleagues at my school because I heard multiple teachers today tell me they know now why so many teachers are quitting. They are considering themselves leaving, not just leaving the district, but just leaving a job that they love because of the stress and because of the lack of preparation. Um, I, we were happy to see our kids today. That was absolutely the best thing. But underneath that, be, you know, when we look past those beautiful pictures you guys got to see, there was the reality of our campuses were not prepared. My campus is one of those campuses that was waiting for those yoga mats. We had no idea what the plan was from the district. We just knew that there were supposed to be some way for them to be able to sit out and have snack in mid-morning. And when we went out there, we found out they had not arrived. On Tuesday, we found out how far apart children were supposed to be spaced during lunch. And so we had to rewrite an entire plan at the last minute while we were all also in trainings. And then today after school, we find out that the after-school programs through the district weren't given the same, uh, guidelines. And so the children were without masks, sitting at tables, eating, but they were not spread out the way that they were supposed to be. So there's a lack of communication for our after-school groups. That is going to affect our positivity rate. So while I appreciate that everybody wants to put forth this wonderful picture of what's happening, we all, we need the realistic view. We need the help. We need the support. We need us all to, like I said earlier tonight, pull together. Because the people who work day in and day out at the schools with the families, we know what they need. We know what we're lacking. And we're asking over and over again for those things. And every single time, people treat us as if we have no idea what we're talking about.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchins. If you can please wrap it up.
I will wrap it up in one second, I promise. I just really want you to understand that so many of us have decades of experience in the classroom. We have experience as pandemic teachers now, and we just need you to start to listen because we're scared what's going to happen to our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Kristin Gori.
Ms. Gori, can you hear us?
I did.
Yep.
Yeah.
Oh.
I, I'm speaking for Kristin Gori and Mo Keshmer. Um, they've yielded their time to me.
Okay.
I don't need, I won't need all that time.
Okay.
Anyway, my name is Michael Bedarn. I'm a parent in the district. My family's experience in independent study today was frustrating and probably repeated by those other eleven hundred families. We thought until Tuesday there was a program in place. But e- even tonight and, and earlier week meeting, uh, the Tuesday meeting, we didn't really learn anything still about how the IS program will operate. In fact, we have more questions. For example, Tuesday, I was confused about the potential for a cap on IS enrollment and what that means and that if, uh, even though there's supposed to be some fluidity of moving, uh, between IS and in-person. I'm not sure what a cap would mean or those, those details haven't been laid out either. So I guess we're just curious. We just need to know what the plan is. And I want to be clear, like everyone else, we want to be back in school in person. Um, and, and given the high levels of COVID here, I hope that SCUSD puts in place the regular testing measures like y'all discussed tonight and that are being, uh, employed in LA and Tana, Auburn, elsewhere. So that, I just think that would go a long way to making our schools safer, especially elementary schools, which would get families like mine back in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Sarah Williams Kingsley.
Good evening, board and superintendent. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Um, I knew that this would be sort of a really big meeting and a really big moment for our community. And so wanted to have a chance to speak tonight about what went well, um, and what definitely could be improved. Um, I want to say my child went back to school today for the first time since March twelfth, um, of two thousand twenty. And he went to a brand-new school where he didn't really know anyone except the teachers that he interacted last year, um, with on Zoom. And he was greeted with, um, a lot of smiles behind masks and a lot of people calling him by name. And, um, a lot of support from the staff, um, at Cal Middle, who did a really great job making their students feel welcome and excited about learning, um, in a way that they haven't, in a way that the students haven't felt for quite some time. Um, and so I want to applaud them for really being there for their students and really putting together a program that was very thoughtful about these students coming to a new space um, in a new time. And I want to acknowledge that, um, our community is really struggling with um, the pandemic. We're as a community not doing enough to protect our most vulnerable children who can't yet be vaccinated. Um, and that's a community problem that is not specific to SAC City. And we're certainly trying to deal with that as a district. And I, I know that lots of people are working really hard. Um, but like others, I want to call out that our communication is really poor. Um, and I don't know why that is. I don't know if it is a delay in approval or that everybody is running from home or what the problem is, but our community deserves better. Um, and I get that things are super fluid and that just the state has tied the district's hands in a lot of ways with um, AB one thirty and districts across the state are experiencing this challenge as well as SAC City. Um, and there's a lot that can't be fixed at the district level that we just have to plow forward and make the best plans we can.
Thank you, Ms. William Kingsley. If you can please wrap, wrap it up.
Yep, the communication could be better and our parents and families deserve better in that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Shonda Wesley.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
This is Shonda Wesley, I'm a parent of a third grader. Members of the board, we really need your help. In June, the district knew an independent study plan was needed and AB one thirty was signed on July ninth. Yet this seems to still have caught the superintendent and the district off guard despite the fact that families have sent letters to the district, spoken at school board meetings about this issue. The two thousand one hundred and fourteen people who filled out interest forms alone should have been a clue this was important. After the webinar, which was planned two days before school starts, didn't allow us to talk and ended early, we received an email at eleven PM that we had one day to register for independent study, one day. But without the benefit of having those important questions we needed asked and answered before making that very big decision for our kids. Some families felt that they were intentionally forced to take the kids to school today or be marked absent. So many of them never got the email as well. I doubt all the families interested in independent study even got a chance to register. The levels of education inequity are astounding here and must be addressed. Whether it's children with asthma, families with caregiving responsibilities for medically vulnerable family members, or those who are otherwise immunocompromised, and others simply just don't want to take a chance with their kids' health. Understandable because the state currently reports that the case rates in Sacramento County are forty-five point five cases per one hundred, one hundred thousand people. And to cap everything off, we were notified before the teachers were notified that they would be responsible for packets for our students or do something or other to keep kids busy. Before independent study formally begins in two weeks, they were told the day before the first day of school. That's disrespectful to them, but it's also disrespectful to us. This program is a clown card of ineptitude and parents are tired of being ignored by our superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. Wesley. If you could please wrap it up.
The district's slapdash planning is unacceptable. The law requires you to do this right and you need to fix it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Steph Rodriguez.
Yes, we can.
Good evening. My name is Steph Rodriguez and I am a mother of a first grader at Sutterville Elementary. Um, today was many kids' first day of school. But for my family and two thousand others who expressed, uh, interest or concern for returning, for two thousand others that were, uh, expressed concern for returning in person and told independent study was our only option, it was just another day. With no direction from the district whatsoever, my son and I wrote in our journal and started learning about volcanoes because I didn't want his first day of school to be empty. As a parent of a first grader, I feel stranded. It's as if you didn't have a plan at all for this online independent study program. We now know we don't even have the teachers to accommodate more than two thousand families that said they wanted to keep their children home safe as the Delta variant continues to spread across all age groups. What will his second day of school be like tomorrow? You can't even tell me that. He is not even on any of the three first-grade rosters at his homeschool. So how are teachers or his principal supposed to keep track of students who are signed up for independent study? Where is his short-term independent study? It's not at his school because they're refusing to do packets. Packages that they were told the day before to make. What am I supposed to do for fifteen days? I received a call from CAP City yesterday. They told me I would be getting a call from a teacher today. Did that happen? Of course not. This is sad. This is unacceptable. You lie to our face. You shake your head, you sit there, you whisper amongst yourselves. This district has really failed its students and it needs to do better. And Jorge, you should resign.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Taylor Kayata.
Good evening, Taylor Kayata here, um, parent of two young children in the district and a candidate for area six trustee. Today was bittersweet for me. Um, I'd like to echo CAO Beta's sentiments about seeing kids back at school. Um, my daughter started TK today at Harkness and I felt exactly that way. Um, and we have pictures just like the ones you showed of her at school. I'm also glad to hear that she got into permanent principal this, um, earlier this evening. I'd also like to shout out to Mr. D at the principal of Twenty Express, who's been absolutely professional about this entire uh, last year and a half. He's, he's truly amazing. Um, but on the negative side, I'm still very worried about COVID spikes. I'm worried about transmission. Um, not just about health, I'm worried about schools getting shut down again and it being like March twenty twenty again where we have no plan. Um, I don't want to have a situation again where my kids, now both of them, will have no plan for their instruction and be basically sitting around watching YouTube all day until we hear from the district. I get that change is difficult. I get that COVID has been difficult. I get it. Um, I won't belabor the issues that have gone into the independent study planning, which others have touched on tonight. Um, as far as I'm concerned, that's moot. We have to fix it from where we are now, but the past is done. My concern is communication, like Sarah Williams Kingsley was mentioning. Us parents have received very little information about this. Um, we haven't received anything. Going back to March twenty twenty, we received very little information. We've received very little since then. Last year was good, though it was a great plan. But now, once again, we're thrown back into a situation where we're not hearing anything until a day or two before things go into effect. We need more. Um, the biggest concern with this is that parents don't have the option to make informed decisions. The approach that you've taken to independent study has essentially been wait and see, wait and see. And then all of a sudden, it was essentially encouraging parents to put their kids in class. I'm comfortable putting my kids in class, not without trepidation, but I'm comfortable. But a lot of parents aren't. Um, but like you've heard tonight, some parents felt like they had to put their kids in class, like you were forcing it. I don't think that that's right. Um, with respect to communication, I'd like to reiterate the request that many have made over the past couple of board meetings, um, which is to listen to the letter that a hundred parents and community members, including me, have signed on to.
Mr. Kay, if you could please wrap it up.
Thanks. Um, just to say, please listen to our letter and establish the forum to meet with us, community members and parents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Terrence Gladney.
Good evening again. Yoga mats and carpet squares. From the onset of this pandemic, best practices have stated that outdoor activities are preferred and one of the best mitigation practices. I have asked well over a dozen times for an exploration into cost and viability of establishing equitable outdoor spaces at each of our campuses. A competent superintendent would know that those exist at some campuses such as OW Early Wine, Theodore Judah, and would know that if he was touting equity across our district, that the absence of those at other campuses does not speak towards equity. It was never even considered. Not me as a parent, me as a bond oversight committee member. Me as a member of the facilities master planning committee where we are talking about equitable implementation and expenditures around facilities on each and every one of our school campuses to make sure that each student has the access to those equitable facilities that will allow them to be their brightest. We cannot talk about equity and then tout our high levels of diversity and poverty, but not put ourselves in a position of humility to really align ourselves with those families that we're trying to conveniently uplift when it fits the needs of the district. Because a humble person, a person who's struggling with poverty knows that you plan for the worst. We do never consider a good, better, best approach. We're ordering or awaiting the delivery of picnic tables now as we awaited the delivery of Chromebooks, knowing that we could potentially need them and had more than adequate funding to secure them. knowing that we could potentially need them and had more than adequate funding to secure them. The Chromebooks were delayed and we said it was a logistical error. We're waiting for picnic tables and in the meantime, our campuses will look like an expanded kindergarten or preschool. We did not know for sure where we were going to be today, but we knew where we could be. So it's very interesting.
Please wrap it up.
And when we continue to talk about our shortcomings budget-wise and expenditure-wise and we're on the verge of insolvency, we still aren't acting in that manner as if it's that urgent. So I question again, are you very upset with where we are today? Because I am and I've heard it in the parents and to those that have expressed their hurt and their pain. I wish I could give them all the hugs, but I stand beside them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Our next and final speaker is Tracy Mistree.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Mistree and I have two elementary students in the district. My concerns are night, are first, that based on the information provided at the very last minute IS webinar, the district is basing its decisions on conditions that existed in June. Instead, the district should be basing their decisions on current COVID conditions, including the presence of a Delta variant, increased case rates in Sacramento, and rising pediatric hospitalizations. With such conditions, I urge the district to urgently implement additional measures such as mandatory testing like LAUSD. In addition, the district should be taking advantage of our later school date start and learn what has been happening in other districts. For example, just three weeks into the school year, Folsom Cordoba is currently reporting that more than one out of every 24 students and staff are in quarantine. What can SCUSD do better than Folsom to change this trajectory? And clearly, SCUSD needs to have a better contingency plan in place than you can do up to 15 days of independent study for your quarantine when teachers are not going to be providing independent study materials. Second, equity, as has been previously discussed in various methods, various ways. I understand the district just held a staff training on equity, yet the last-minute, time-limited, online-only rollout of independent study interest and enrollment forms is the polar opposite of equitable. My first grader with a medical condition and many other students at high risk had two choices. In-person instruction in an environment that poses an unacceptably high risk of contracting COVID and COVID-related complications given the current community spread, or a currently nonexistent independent study option. I do not consider this equitable. I mean, I'm particularly exasperated by Mr. Aguilar's suggestion at the IS webinar to give in-person a try and see how it works. But in practically the same breath, he stated that independent study spots may not be available at a later date. And I don't understand how we as parents can see how things go when we're not being allowed on campus. Communication is poor and my first grader is not capable of reporting how COVID safety precautions are being carried out. And to reiterate what some of the other speakers said.
Wrap it up, Ms. Mistree.
Increased communication, even over-communication, would be preferable. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That was the last comment, Ms. Marty.
Yes, that was the last comment.
Okay. All right. I want to start by just, I first want to say thank you to staff for that presentation and thank you for starting with celebrating our students. You know, my children are now Sac City graduates. This morning, I drove around the neighborhood on my way to work all around to my school sites as parents were dropping off their kids at school. And we've talked about that sound before. That, that sound of joy, that sound of our kids that were so happy to see their friends after so many months of not seeing them, that sound of parents laughing and joy of just their kids having some sense of normalcy. It actually brought me to tears on my way to work. So I just want to celebrate that our kids are back at school. And though we have a lot of work to do and to keep our kids safe, we are doing our darn best to keep them safe. I have a couple of questions in regard to the presentation. The first question is for Ms. Flores. Ms. Flores, did you say, I know one of the commentators had mentioned about mandatory surveillance rapid testing. And did you say that there was a shortage on the rapid antigen testing kits?
Correct, yeah, the Binex Now rapid antigen test kits, there is a current shortage right now nationally.
Yeah, and I know if for anybody that's tried to go to like CVS or Target or Walgreens to try to purchase a test, you just can't find them. Ms. Flores, I'll be reaching out to you tomorrow. I have a contact that I've been working with for my day job of a company called Medic Health out of Florida. And I've had a conversation with them and they have a large supply. I've told them how many students we have. They said that they could supply tests for our, for our district. So I'll put you in contact with them to see if we can maybe get a contract with them.
Sounds good.
Thank you. My next question is for the facilities department. In regard to the picnic tables, we have some fantastic CTA construct, or CTE construction academy classes at Luther Burbank and Rosemont High School. And I'm just wondering if this is, I mean, 15 weeks seems really far out to be able to get picnic benches. And I'm wondering if this is something that we can partner with our high schools? Go purchase a ton of wood and just ask our students, I mean, this is why, this is part of their class, this is part of their learning. And if that's something that you've actually considered.
I can't tell you, just being new, that that's been explored or not officially, but I could say that it's something definitely could be a conversation. The 15-week lead time is not from lack of effort on the district's side. It's a shortage of steel in this world and production and labor. It's across the construction industry. There wasn't a partner that would be able to do anything faster than what we found on the tables. Wood's going to be in the same spot, so we can use our, our classes to maybe produce a few. But we'd have to make sure they are spec for EDA and accessibility. So we could come up with some type of plan and maybe work with them to provide some opportunity for the classes to participate.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, and no means did I mean that this was the district's fault for the delay in picnic tables. I just think that this is a fantastic opportunity to be able to use our construction academies to be able to help supply some of those tables. If you can, please reach out to them. Thank you. And then lastly, I just want to say that I have the utmost respect for all of our teachers and staff that made today happen. I know that you guys are stressed and I think we all are. And I, I hope you know how much we respect the work that they, that you do. But I have to say that I am just outraged by the comments by CTA Board President David Fisher tonight in regard to the professional learning glitch. In this day of age, we should all know that technology sometimes fails. And we cannot prevent that from happening. And it's unfortunate and I know how stressful that was. I totally understand. Today I was having issues with my printer and I just wanted to throw it out the window. I know how stressful technology is and that we, you know, we were trying to give you these two days of, of PL. And I, I understand that frustration, but I just, I'm pretty outraged on the comments of just please, you know, it was not the district's fault that there was a glitch within the technology, so. And I wanted to thank staff for recognizing that and giving to October 1st and to, to complete the process. So that's my only comments for right now. Member Villa. So I had a lot of things prepared that I was going to say and again, feel like a lot of hearing what our community's saying, our teachers, our parents, for going, for starting school today, for our children not being back in full time since March of 2020, hearing some of those things really knocked the wind out of my sail because I, it makes me very emotional. Everybody is struggling and it's really hard for me, taking off the trustee hat and the parent hat, to understand that everybody is struggling and everybody is doing the best that they can. And I, what you're saying as well, I mean, I know you're, everybody's frustrated and we appreciate our staff, we appreciate our teachers. I mean, we are working so hard to, to do the best and nothing is going to be 100% because we've never been in this situation before. But we're trying our best and I, I really hope that our community knows that. I say this to my child all the time, but give people grace because you don't, we don't know everything about every side of the story. So I'm asking you to give our staff, our teachers, our families, this board, our superintendent, some grace right now. Our kids are back in school and I'm very thankful for that and I want to keep them there safely. So I'm just, the only question that I really had is just for Diana Flores, when you were talking to LA, I can't even talk right now, I'm sorry, I'm very. Yes, thank you, I can't talk today. Did other districts require vaccinations for their staff or how does that work? Because I've been asked a few times about, is that a possibility that we could make sure that our staffs are safe, our children are safe, our families are safe with vaccinations? And obviously I don't want to push that on anyone, but it just, is that something that other districts are looking into?
You know, I'm not totally aware and I don't know if superintendent might know this, you know, better. I know some of the college systems are doing that. And my focus time with LA Unified was really about their mandatory testing. So superintendent, do you know?
Yeah, I don't have a direct access to that either, but we will look into it, Member Villa.
Again, I just, thanks, everybody, staff, families, teachers. Lot of grace. Thank you, Member Villa. Member Phillips?
I think that's on now. Okay, so. And, and I, I hear what Member Villa is saying. And I know that, that grace is something that we need to give, but we also need to look into humility. And I'm wondering possibly if from the district end, we're able to admit that perhaps we did not handle this properly? That we did not do what we could have done when we had the opportunity to make this work better today? I don't get a lot of comments specifically on what's, what's going on or what happened today, other than it seemed like something went wrong on a couple of different, different avenues. And the responsible party, of course, would be the district. Is there any way that we can be open to accepting the fact that we could truly be at fault for some of the things that happened today? I have another question after that, though, but I just. What part in particular?
Yeah.
You name it, from, from the, the learning for the instructors or the fact that, you know, we, we had, I mean, I, I watched kids walk into a school this morning and it was, it was fantastic to see them. But I felt like we weren't ready. I felt like we weren't ready. You know, not, not saying it in the worst way, I'm not calling out anyone, but taking ownership of certain things allows us to learn from our mistakes. We talk about, you know, the joy in a failure and learning from that mistake. We can grow better from that if we take ownership, so. You know, I'm not 100% sure if we're willing to do that. I personally am, you know, am willing to accept that it's possible that we didn't do everything right. And trustee Villa said it, everybody's basically a hot mess right now. We're all trying to get through this together, but we have a slightly more important position in how we do this. So I'm just curious if we, we really can look at the failures and the mistakes that we have made in this and, and analyze it in a way so that we can come back better. And I know, you know, closed session is kind of weird, you can't talk about certain things. But I think what I said was pretty, pretty clear that, you know, owning up to mistakes will help us do better in the future. So I'm going to put it at that and then ask my other question of Ms. Flores. But I hope that we can talk about that. I hope that we can have a discussion about accepting fault for certain things, not everything. And for Ms. Flores, I'm a musician. We're ordering covers for instruments, but we're only ordering them for things that are not wind instruments. I'm just curious because when I play my sax and I put a cover on my sax, I could play through a mouthpiece, that's not an issue. I mean, through a face mask, a regular medical-grade face mask, but air comes out of horns all over the place. So I'm just curious if we are are really, and, and I, I love our band programs, I love our band kids, I'm still a band kid. But I, I just want to make sure that we're being safe in what we're offering the kids to put over their instruments. I don't know if we have clarinet sleeves or anything like that, but, you know, whatever you can say would be helpful.
Yeah, so we're looking at all of the specialized bell covers, I think they call them, and, and there's specialized face covers with, you know, kind of openings. So I know we're looking at ordering those. CJ is our VAPA coordinator, has been working with risk management to get those. Right now, though, they are playing outside even with those if they had them. And so we're going to look at that CDPH guidance, really look at what we think is safe in our community right now and make sure that we can keep our kids playing. I know how important it is for them to be able to participate and, and do these activities, but do it in the safest way, especially with this high rate of community spread that we have right now.
Okay, thank you. It's good to hear that they're playing outside. My groups play outside too, so it's good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Phillips. Member Morosky?
Thank you, President Pritchett. I guess a couple of just observations and then have, I had a question for Victoria Flores as well about whether we have a recommendation about mandating vaccines for, for our staff and students. So, yeah, I really appreciate all of the, the work that went in to making today successful and special, and it was successful, you know, for the vast majority of our students and, and staff. And I, I know, you know, there are, there are things that we need to, need to address. I think, you know, it's, it's fine to, you know, learn from mistakes, take responsibility. I think it's up to us to be as clear as we can about, you know, precisely what we're talking about, what those things are, so we can diagnose and, and, you know, do better if we need to. But I also, I, I want to, you know, just encourage us all to take a big step back and realize that, you know, all of the districts around the state are struggling with many of the same things. And I am incredibly proud of our staff and this district and how we have approached a lot of these things because this has been extremely challenging in, in every single aspect. And I have a lot of trust in the staff that they are using, you know, the best evidence, looking for the best practices, talking to the experts, doing, trying to do the right thing in almost like, you know, across the board. I really, you know, every, every time I look at, you know, what the best practice is, what the evidence suggests versus what we're doing, that's what we're trying to do. That's what we've been trying to do this entire time. And I don't know if folks understand. I did, certainly didn't understand before I was on this board of the constraints on the district's authority to actually effectuate things, to actually act. And we've been talking about the academic calendar for five years. The district.
Longer.
Okay. The district does not have the authority to do the things it wants to do in the way that it wants to do them. It could be aligned with best practices, it could be, you know, aligned with the evidence. But the district does not have authority to move forward to do those things. And that is a big reason why the district cannot communicate that these things will be done in the way that it wants to accomplish them because it does not have the authority to move forward on them. So it's, you know, if, if I didn't know some of these things, I might think as well that the district staff are, you know, inept or just sitting on their hands waiting for school to start so they can figure out independent study. I mean, that's, it's absolutely ludicrous to think that knowing what I know now about. mean, that's, it's absolutely ludicrous to think that, knowing what I know now about how hard the staff works to make, uh, to make this a success. So I just, I just really want to appreciate, um, the work that's gone in to, to all of it. And I, I, you know, it's not gonna be perfect. There are things that, you know, that, everyone's human, systems fail, things get screwed up, but, um, I just really want to appreciate all, all of the staff work and, and, and all of what we're doing. Um, I had two boys that went back to school today after, uh, you know, for the first real school day since March of 2020. So, um, I am, you know, emotional about, about this day as a parent as well. Um, I guess the, I'll go back to them, the one question I had about, um, you know, just in, in the, in the sense of trying to keep our district and our students as safe as possible, trying to maximize our opportunities for, you know, staying in person as much as possible without quarantining. Is it, um, is it advisable? Does, does the staff have recommendations about mandating, uh, vaccines, um, mandating vaccines for, for staff? Mand- mandating vaccines for students? Um, you know, if, if it's recommended by staff, I would be supportive of, of moving towards that. Um, I did, you know, have some misgivings before, uh, the FDA gave full approval to the vaccine, but now that that's been done, I, I really do think we should evaluate that. So would love to hear, you know, any initial thoughts on that.
Yeah, you know, I can just share, you know, we haven't deeply considered that at this point, but I, I think that's something we could definitely look into. Um, to answer the question, Susan Civiles, one of my amazing lead school nurses, Google searched and texted me, Culver City is the first district, um, in, in, uh, California, I believe somewhere in, in the LA area who is mandating vaccines. So we can dive in and learn more about what they're doing. Um, it sounds like Superintendent Thurman's been supportive of that, um, and we can come back to the board.
I would appreciate it. Thank you so much. And thank you for, thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you, Member Morosky. Suda Member Zhang?
Um, I would like to ask some questions about, uh, some things that I don't see on the presentation, and I want clarification specifically on the actions taken after there has been a concert, a confirmed case on a certain campus. From what I gathered from the presentation, the only thing that the district is going to do is quarantine or isolate a certain staff member or student, um, at their house for various amounts of days based on their circumstances. And I also see that if the person has been in a classroom, it's going to be disinfected. Um, so I would like to ask, is that enough to make sure that the campus is still safe for students to attend school? Because, um, as we know, the nature of this virus, it's extremely contagious and only quarantine, uh, the student or staff who got the vaccine and also their close contact. It, we can't make sure that the virus has not already been spread to other parts of the school, and therefore I am a bit concerned about that. And also, I would like to know, what's the number of cases that we need to classify the situation as an outbreak? Because I assume that when we have an outbreak, whatever the number is, we would have to close down a certain campus. Um, and a follow-up que- a follow-on question on that is, if we are closing a campus, are we sending all students into independent studies? Or is distance learning going to return? I think these are questions that students would want to know, and I am deeply concerned about them, because I don't see them anywhere in this presentation. Um, and one more topic, um, is quarantine. Um, I see that when a person is required to quarantine, they would be staying at their own home. Um, how do we make sure that the person who is staying at their house is not spreading the virus to their family members and contaminating the neighborhood, um, which could include young children, elders, or other vulnerable in, uh, individuals? Because not every family can afford a space that has enough room to quarantine a person. And the delivery of food, sharing a bathroom, and also poor ventilation can all be factors that increase the risk of getting the virus and spreading it to other people. And so is there an alternative plan to quarantine at home for people who doesn't have adequate space to quarantine at their own home? Thank you.
And thank you for those excellent questions, Student Board Member, I'm saying. I'll, I'll do my best to answer, and, you know, maybe we can bring back some more detail for you, because I could probably give a thesis on, on, uh, contact tracing. So close contacts, when there's a positive case, our first question is, were they physically present at school? And where were they? So that's part of the contact tracing process, is figuring out what locations, what days they were infectious, and looking at who was near them within six feet or less for 15 minutes or more. All of those individuals will, will be quarantined. And depending on those decision trees, if that exposure was at school, they can qualify for a modified quarantine, um, if they're not a household member. So that's the contact tracing process. And then everyone in that classroom will also then be notified that, hey, there was a positive case in your classroom or your student's classroom. This is one of the reasons we're really, um, wanting to push testing and our board and our community are asking us to mandate testing for exactly your concern, but how do we know it didn't spread somewhere else? Because you know you're on a high school campus, our social connections can be very complex, right? So just because you were in, you know, a chem class, doesn't mean you're not also friends with, you know, other groups around. So if we were to do that weekly surveillance testing, we would also be catching those cases. Um, anyone who's symptomatic, of course, we'd want to keep home, right? That's number one, so they shouldn't even be coming up. And then we offer that testing. So that's kind of part of some of those layers. An outbreak that you're asking about, CDPH and Sat County Public Health are pretty silent on this. They're not really saying, so that's why when we have a number of cases, like we talked about tonight at, um, NJB, we reach out to the county and we consult, what is this looking like? Do these cases look related or not? Um, what's the spread in the area? Um, and we will follow their guidance. Um, and so tonight, they issued us very specific guidance that we'll be following. Um, distance learning, I think I will let, uh, academic department answer that. And you also asked a really great question about different kinds of households and living situations. Right now, because the spread is so, um, great in our area, anyone who has a, a member, um, of their household who's positive, all the other household members have to quarantine right now. It used to not be like that. If you were vaccinated, you didn't have to quarantine. Now they're saying anyone in that household, regardless of vaccine, has to quarantine. We also assess the ability to isolate exactly what you were talking about. You know, are there shared bathrooms? How many people are living there? There are some resources through the county and some of the, the COVID hubs where they can drop food off to families, they can provide alternative housing. And so we reach out and we link with those resources when we've needed to. We've had, you know, people that we text daily because they live alone, and we want to check in with them because we know they're home and isolated. Um, and so those are just kind of, you know, the, the different situations, uh, that we've found ourselves in. I hope I got all your questions, I'm not sure.
Um, can someone answer the distance learning question?
I can. Hi, Member Zhang, I can try. Um, as far as if a student goes into quarantine, as it stands right now, we are not able to provide distance learning. So we would, the student would be in short-term independent study. And there are, there are just our limitations to our ability to really support students with that short-term independent study availability. So it's usually typically, um, some sort of a packet. We can also, because we have all of the technology that we've used over the past few years, we can also offer to students through Google Classroom, lessons and work to continue to keep them creative thinking and working as they await their, their healthy screening and, and returning back to school. But as it stands right now, we're not able to offer, um, the kind of distance learning that we've had over the last 18 months. I hope that answers your question, and I appreciate the concern for that. I think that, um, you're predicting a true reality that we know what we'll be, we'll be working to face.
Um, so if worst-case scenario, a school is to be shut down, is there already a plan drafted for what's going to happen? Because I understand that if a singular student is being quarantined, they're not receiving the traditional distance learning. But if everyone is being sent home, is there going to be a large-scale distance learning return?
That's another really good question. And as it stands right now, we're still not able to offer even under those circumstances, a full-scale distance learning to all of the students. But I think those are really good ideas and ways that we know that we could suit, serve students, because we have all of that technology, as you know, Member Zhang, in our classrooms right now, ready to go. If that were something that ended up being, um, approved that we could offer. As it stands right now, we're not yet able.
Um, thank you both for your answers, and I definitely would push for the, um, mandating testing, because, um, I heard, I was informed that in one of our high school campus new tech, um, majority of the sophomore and junior class is being quarantined because, um, of refusal to COVID testing, which means they are suffering learning loss, which defeats the whole purpose of reopening campus. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Garcia?
Uh, thank you. Um, it's always tough to go after student board members, they're terrific. So, so thank you for your, um, very insightful questions, and we often have more questions and answers. I feel like that's the norm now. Um, but I, you know, I, I have mixed emotions tonight. Um, as a parent, I celebrate that my daughters went back to school today in person. Um, they were excited, they were nervous of starting a new school, um, a new grade, they moved on to middle school. And when I picked them up today, um, they were just so happy. They were exhausted, um, physically and emotionally, they were just exhausted, but they were so excited to see their friends, to meet their teachers. Just the energy at the school was just so, so just wonderful. Um, but I do recognize as well, as a board member, that while we celebrate all of that, and it, nothing's perfect. Um, I think we can accept that we're all doing our best. And, um, I know that staff here at the central office has been working really hard. And I have no doubt that staff at school sites and the classrooms have been working very, very hard to prepare for today. So I want to recognize everyone's hard work. I do feel that we left our parents who expressed and are committed to independent study, exclusively long-term independent study, I feel like we left them behind. And that makes me sad, it makes me frustrated, makes me angry. And, um, and I know that the la- everything happened so last minute that I just don't know how our parents would, were supposed to know what to do. The teachers know what to do. I mean, now we have teachers that, um, at, at school sites that will not provide packets. So what happens to these kids in these 15 days? What, what do they get? They can't go and, onto the school site because they're, they're opting to not go in person for various reasons. So what are we doing for them? Um, I'd like to get an answer on what comes next for these parents who are just desperate to make contact with, um, someone, to get assigned a teacher, and just, to just get information that they should have had, they should have had before. And I, and, and I know why we are where we're at. The plan that we're, that's being implemented is not the plan that the district was hoping to, um, to offer. They had a much more robust and aspirational plan to offer to students in independent study, and that didn't happen. Um, so the Plan B, I think, happened very quickly, and we left families behind. Um, so I, I'd like to get an answer just for the parents that are listening to us that are still stranded. What comes next for them? And then I have other questions as well.
I can, um, start to try to answer that, Member Garcia. Um, and I, and I truly appreciate that question. What comes next is, we're working on that staffing piece. So we know the parents have shared with us that they do now want to attend Cap City for the year, or at least for some longer period of time. And so we started actually today, starting to register students into Cap City from the parents who have told us, we've made the decision, we're committing, we want to move to Cap City. And we started registering those students today. And we heard a Mr. Schweitzer share how a very committed team spent the day there working to get that to happen for as many students as we could. And we started by filling the spaces and every little nook and cranny that we could fill with the teachers that we have available for students right there at Cap City. Now what we're doing, and we started some of this today, and Mr. Schweitzer shared this too, is we're going to start to help teachers to come over to sex, or Cap City, and we're creating additional spaces there. As we, as we move teachers into Cap City, parents will expect that they'll hear from Cap City and will be able to say, we have your teacher. And our goal is to make sure that that can happen sooner than that 15 or 14 days. We do know that a student can be in, in short-term independent study for up to 14 days, and that is not what we want to happen, it's not the plan. And we are, and we're working very hard, our human resources department is working really hard with us, the Cap City team is working hard with us, our budget department and business department, everybody working to get the staffing to Cap City as rapidly as we can. And as we get that staffing there, parents will expect, should expect to hear a call from Cap City. The, um, the team has also designed a very smooth and seamless process, so that as soon as we have that space for the student, they are contacting the school that the student is currently enrolled in, letting that school know that we're, um, going to care for that student at Cap City. And then that that school is reserving that spot for that student in case any time within five days that parent decides they want to return back. So that is what parents should expect. They should also expect for this, the 14 or up to 14 days for short-term independent study, that they should have some work, whether that is as part of a packet, or it can also come through Google Classroom. And they should expect that they should, that they could have those pieces. If they're not getting what they need, I would encourage them to first reach out to our constituent services department, because that's where we're caring for all of this data right now, so that we can make sure that we can do the outreach that's needed.
So I'm still thinking of the parent who contacts the school, um, and the school is not offering packets during the short-term independent study. Where does that parent go to get learning materials for their child? Can they come to the district office and get materials, um, while they wait to be enrolled in the, in, in Cap City, the long-term independent study program?
Sorry, I was on mute. Um, Member Garcia, I don't know if the district, and I'll, um, I'll turn to somebody else on the team to see if they can answer that from another perspective. I don't know that the dis- the district absolutely could provide materials. We absolutely could. We absolutely could provide materials. I just don't know that we can. So I'll turn to somebody else to hear if we can do that. Um, it's possible, we could make that happen. But I don't know that we that we're allowed to or that we can do that. I don't know if somebody else has a has a thought on that.
Member Garcia, thank you for the question. I I will, I will, I will give you my perspective on the answer to your question and that is that uh ultimately we will um take ownership of the responsibility to ensure that students have learning materials in front of them. Uh, and if that means that uh we will centralize and we will provide uh uh those learning materials for students, uh then we will do so. Uh, I hope that uh what we can do is provide uh learning materials as resources uh to our uh teachers that uh may have students who um are choosing independent studies as a learning option. Um, but I I just want to be clear that uh we 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 will uh own the responsibility of providing uh uh materials to our students.
Okay, so that parent would call the school site um principal or call the district office? How would they secure the materials? Just just so it's crystal clear what options parents have?
What we what what we can commit to is um allowing us uh at least until the end of of business day tomorrow so that we can put that information out uh based on the decision that we make about whether we uh will ask families to contact the district or contact their school site.
Okay, thank you. And I think that's just go, I I still have some two just questions on on some of the information and the materials, but just to wrap this um up, I comes back to something that I, you know, I feel like I I keep asking for, I think my colleagues keep asking for. There's these really hard deadlines that we need to stick by in terms of negotiations. Um, because we always um run out of time and then we're scrambling. Um, there is a plan in place, there are often multiple plans in place because it just depends. But it feels like it's always scrambling, so um I do want to ask that we um, you know, try over-communicating um, moving forward. Um, there is always um, you know, uh a request from many of our public commenters about the need to communicate and um communicate more. I think it's going to be critical as this is going to be another year of so many unknowns that we um we want to try something different and maybe that's that's it, over-communication. So I do want to move forward on to my questions. Um, the masking outdoors, um masking both indoors and outdoors and how they relate to sports. Um, I do see that um there was one, I think, um, sports indoors um requiring masking, but I want to um clarify whether or not masking is required for outdoor sports or um activities that are not close in proximity or contact sports. I'm thinking of running, for example. Um, this came up through one of my constituents, so I want to see clarification on whether or not masks will be require uh required for the running team at a an elementary school, for example. Is is there an answer to that?
Yeah, I can speak to it in in generalities. It's, you know, we we are asking everyone to mask outdoors even during um physical, you know, activities. You know, I think we can take into consideration, and we did this last year when we masked outdoors and indoors as well. If you had more than six feet of distancing, you were fairly stationary, right? That's the kind of the the protocol for our mask breaks. If we could look at something like that, I mean, if you're doing long-distance running and you're really far apart, you know, that would make sense. Our concern is when we start to come closer together with the c- with the high rate of spread with the delta, we're just in a different place. Right? And and when we're breathing heavy, we're going to be expelling all of those aerosolized droplets, so I mean, it's something we can look at and and, you know, work with our different athletics, but um, we're just really wanting to do everything we can to stop that spread. And of course, there is guidance in the new CDPH. If it's not safe for the sport, like, we're not going to face mask when we swim, right? There are certain um and they reference, I believe, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and so we can dive deeper into those as well.
Yeah, so the particular question was about um caught um cross-country running type of sport, so if if I can get some, an answer on that, that would be great. Um, I, you know, I I'm glad to hear about the update on mandatory testing. I think that's really important. I keep ask, I keep getting questions about that. I think that would bring a lot of peace of mind to many of our families in their decision to return back to in-person instruction for their kids, so I support that. Um, I I'm glad to hear that vaccination clin- clinics will be ongoing. I think um those are really important. They've been very successful. I have to um give kudos to the district and their strong, early and strong partnership with um with some of our community partners in delivering um community clinics or vaccination clinics at our school sites. This is not something that many school districts did across the state, so I just want to make sure that we celebrate where we can. And um I also want to bring up something else that has um been more recent and probably will know more in the coming days, as we, today was just the first day back at school, is that many of our students who are not returning, how we are going to um track them down like we did, almost like our our um Jennifer Kretschman's team did so successfully um when we came back in um, you know, distance learning. But um in particular, our students who are also stuck in Afghanistan. So trying to figure out, um, you know, who's missing in their location um and um figure out how we can work through some of our um, you know, the local electeds, congressional elected electeds to to try and help um any way that we can um to uh bring back our students um to um to school, so just want to make sure that I I just publicly stated that because it's something that um I have heard a lot more in the last twenty-four hours than I anticipated knowing, so and I know we have a growing um refugee um student population in Sac City. Um, and in particular, um, you know, students from from that region of the of the world, so. So thank you for um all the work, um, and um, and those are all my comments.
Thank you, Member Garcia. Member Rhodes?
Thank you. Um, I have just a few questions. I think that uh my colleagues uh spoke articulately uh about majority of the things I had here. Um, I I would say um, I I maybe Chief Yeti can can speak to this, but um, or even Victoria possibly. Uh, when we when we talk about uh our possibility of our our schools closing down, um if case rates uh reach a certain number and us not having uh really anything for whole school sites, um say like if a school site had to shut down. Um, I don't, I don't feel that that's acceptable, an acceptable answer of to say we 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 don't have really a plan for them or for them all to be on a short-term independent study. I I think that we should take opportunity while we don't have the issue currently uh to uh improve and 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 kind of integrate some of these learnings of last year um and and start now thinking about plans of what that looks like. So we don't have our issue um that we had today that so many people spoke about today. Um, I think that if we're proactive, um, we can get ahead of some of these things. Um, and just like you said, like LA Unified, I think one of the speakers talked about it, LA Unified uh live-fitting classes or um or like just integrating our virtual learning atmosphere. I think we start looking at that or thinking about how in Sac City, what that looks like for Sac City. Not necessarily doing the same things as other places, but how do we best service our community members, families, teachers, staff, in a way that works for Sac City? Um, that's not cookie cutter, that we was something we can do. Um, and I would like to say that publicly, like, we we need to start looking at ways to do that um as we move forward and we see the spread of delta. And especially in certain areas of our city, especially areas of city in uh poverty, um low social economic conditions and also uh and people of color. Um, and so I think we, as we look at equity, we have to take that in consideration as well. Um, but I will, I will kind of back up a little bit and say that um today, all five of my little guys got to go to class. Um, my my youngest daughter, Rosamaria, uh she actually hurt her leg, so she didn't get to go to class today, but she'll be there tomorrow. Um, but I I have five little ones that are uh going in the district from eighth grade all the way down to kinder, and it's amazing to see them come back. It's amazing to see families uh excited. It's it's amazing to see teachers and staff excited. Um, and that was the majority of my experience today as I went to sites. Um, Cap City, uh the work that uh Principal Amarin was doing onsite uh was amazing. He was able to connect with parents and connect with parents in in a real way to where they felt when they got there, uh that they got the information they needed. Uh, on the flip side of that, um, before they got there, they didn't feel like they got any information they needed. Um, I was able to talk to a group of parents that were sitting down filling out uh papers for getting into independent study. Uh, I'm just hearing from them um and their overall concern. Um, and it was uh you ever really take a second back and just listen and and hear and and take off the hat of oh, I'm I'm trying to hear for the district or I'm like the official, but as a parent, um the the anxiousness in their voices, uh how how they felt in the moment was something that as elected officials that are community-facing, uh us the board, we have to take those things in consideration. I know that our board takes those in consideration. Uh, majority of us or all of us are parents except for our s- uh student board member. Um, and we we take this in consideration of knowing that, yes, we do have to do better for our our constituents, our community members, our staff, our teachers. Um, and know that we we are working towards that, um and but we're not taking away the idea of the hardship uh of communication um and for our community as a whole. And I just want to be clear about that. There's no, there's no overstepping that, um and we take responsibility for that. And we are going to do better and we're and we talk about how we're going to do this better next time. So come next year, we're not going to have this issue. Um, but I but going back, I do want to um, Member Zhang spoke about it very clearly of saying you know, we ne- we need to have something for our our students if something were to close down. Um, and she had some poignant questions around that. And and I support her ideas of making sure that we have uh something for our students and it's and it's not acceptable. Papers home uh for fifteen days, not acceptable. Um, and so we have, we have to do better. Um, and I hope that we start looking at ways to uh prepare ahead of time as we move forward. Um, Chief Yeti, I guess I don't have any questions. It was more of a statement. Uh, so we can, we can uh talk more about how we can do that and I I look forward to working with my colleagues to make sure that we do that going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Rhodes, and thank you to all of my colleagues for all of your questions and comments this evening. All right, um, with that, thank you again to staff. Thank you to all of our community members, our teachers um and and our students um that came to to speak tonight. We appreciate you. Um, this is an informational item and I'm sure there'll be lots of discussions as time passes, so thank you. All right, we're going to move into uh public hearing. Um, item ten point one, public hearing for the first reading of Board Policy thirty-five eighty records retention. Mr. Lyons and Mr. Bozio, good evening.
Good evening, um, board members and Superintendent Aguilar. I'm I'm Bob Lyons, uh Chief Information Officer for the district, and as you mentioned, this is the first reading of uh Board Policy thirty-five eighty regarding document uh record retention. So, uh, next slide, please. So state and federal law require that the district uh develop a secure document management system uh that provides for uh storage, retrieval, archiving, and uh destruction of district documents. So uh this board policy has not been updated since two thousand and one. So you can just well imagine, there's been a lot of changes in the last twenty years. Um, that's centered around electronically stored information. So in the district, that would that would include software applications like uh Microsoft Office Suite, Google Docs, email, and those kind of documents. Next slide, please. So, um, in order to uh ensure the confidentiality of records and its safeguarding of data against damage, this policy revision also addresses the district's document management system that includes the and any breach of security, what documents are stored, and how they are retrieved, archived, and disposed of in accordance with law. Next slide, please. This is the slide. Previous. There you go, all right. Uh, to propose uh revisions to Board Policy thirty-five eighty are based on the updates from the California School Boards Association. And these provisions include ensuring that employees receive the information about the district's document management system, so that would include what needs to be stored, what needs to be in case there's litigation hold and those kind of things, so it's more informational. Um, and also what the data breach notification process is. And our, so right now it's covered under our school's insurance. So, any questions?
All right, uh, we have no public comment on this. This is the first reading. Do we, how many? Oh, Member Morosky?
I just wanted to appreciate um you bringing this forward and um I know, you know, uh many of our policies are out of date. And I, you know, I understand that that there's been a more kind of systematic effort to to review those and I just wanted to tell you how much I appreciate that. And um definitely twenty years in this uh, in this field is uh way too long, so I appreciate that we are, we are um addressing those, you know, those high priority uh items that probably also have, you know, significant exposure to um you know, legal issues if they're if they're not uh addressed and updated, so I I just, you know, would encourage, encourage um staff to continue to bring those forward to us. I appreciate it. Thank you.
You still do it right out of my mouth. I am not going to repeat that. Thank you. We will see you back on a second reading. We appreciate your time. And thank you. All right, Alight, um eleven point O, Communications, eleven point one, Employee Organization Report, S C T A.
Yes, uh David Fisher is online to report on S C T A.
Okay.
Good evening. I hadn't expected to come back as my prepared remarks were already um read earlier. Um, I have to say, you know, with the exception of Board Member Phillips and Board Member Rhodes, it seems like you might have heard the parent comments, but I'm not sure you listened to them. I mean, particularly President, which is selective outrage on uh the glitches that happened. It's not just glitches. You heard people talking about communications. The district waited until the night before teachers had to go to work the next day. No heads up. It was in both our proposals for months. It was reached on the twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth, and we kept saying, please send something out so teachers know they even have to work in the morning. Some didn't see it until the morning. There's really no excuse for that, but that's not uh, I mean, if that were the only thing, it really wouldn't be a big deal. It's about the communication that you heard people talking about so earl- uh earlier and the lack of respect for just the professional courtesy to let people know they got to work. Uh, you know, as soon as you have the information. As far as um Board Member Morosky kind of insinuating that somehow we were delaying things, I'm talking about the calendar, wouldn't we sure that's about, but I want to be clear that in the spring, we proposed a virtual academy. I want to repeat that. In the spring, we proposed a virtual academy and are back to school better. We waited until August nineteenth for the district to bring us their plan and their proposal. So from, I think, May through August, there was zero movement uh from the district on a virtual academy or anything that would uh be needed in this moment. That's why we're waiting for the last minute. We didn't block anything. We proposed it. So that's needs to be said. Um, as far as some of the other things I've I've heard tonight, um, by the way, we have the mandatory testing in our proposal, and so far the district is rejecting it. We even put in there, subject to We even put in there, subject to availability. So we understand there might be some problems. At this point, the district even, even rejecting that. Oh, and as far as the, again, it goes to communication about the packets. Again, you told parents the night before that teachers were going to have them ready the next day, then we got an email this morning. I was going to read it. It's from the superintendent. He sent it out to all of us, because I guess didn't know that. Quote, "We will send out packets for sites to share with students for the first 15 days." So this morning, teachers got that, they can, packets are coming. And it seems like you guys don't know about that, not planned, but that's what we were told this morning. So essentially, that's all I've got to say, other than we have some great ideas. You should have heard the ideas our high school teacher had about using zero in seventh period for an independent learning. Very excited, all kinds of things that we had that you guys have just rejected. And again, with the exception of Board Member Phillips and Rhodes, I think your defensiveness just says a lot. Thank you.
S C A U? E C S?
There, there are no other employee organization.
Okay, but we have one public comment on employee organization reports.
The requester is no, no longer online.
Okay. Item 11.2, District Advisory Committees, the C A C?
Yes, Taylor Caillada is reporting.
Good evening, Taylor.
Hi, Rose McAuliffe will actually be giving our update, but I'd request that my two minutes of public comment be combined with her statement so she can read our combined statement. Thanks.
Do you guys have, does somebody have a report?
Yes, yes, Rose will be, Rose McAuliffe will be reporting.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can.
My name is Rose McAuliffe, and I'm speaking on behalf of the District Special Education Community Advisory Committee, the C A C. We have three items that we would like to bring to your attention. One is timing around independent learning for students with I E Ps. Two, the truly viable option of continued, continued virtual learning for students. And three, the testing, monitoring, and tracking of COVID-19. One, timing around independent study learning for students with I E P. Many parents in our community are not yet comfortable sending their children back to the classroom. However, for those students with I E Ps, they will not be able to engage in independent study learning until they have a meeting with district staff. Attempting to get through these meetings and with school already underway, the delay in timing is hurting our students' learning opportunities. This process looks like it could take at least a month. What can our children do in the meantime? School has started today. We ask for creative solutions to expedite this process, please. Two, Special Education Services and Assessments. Our second issue concerns access to special education services. With independent study, our services could be even more curtailed than they were last year. Please consider offering virtual distance learning for our students as they did this past year. Now that, now that we have the hang of virtual learning, let's leverage this existing tool and support those students that can thrive in this virtual learning environment and have it as an opportunity to keep our kids safe, especially those who have compromised health challenges or other special circumstances. There's also understanding the union is requesting to work with virtual learning, which makes us very happy, that that's a collaborative effort. Additionally, there are family, there are concerns that families continue to choose independent study. They're not going to be able to receive their special education services. We request the district to continue to please honor the special education services that these students are entitled to for their I E Ps. And the third issue is, can the district provide a designated timeline for contact tracing regarding COVID-19 cases? For purposes of safety and ongoing monitoring, this would serve as an important tool for the safety of our students, faculty, and staff. We're looking for consistency among all the school locations, please. Happy to email these three requests to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a report from the Local Control Accountability Plan Parent Advisory Committee?
Yes, from Sarah Williams Kingsley.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent. I am one of the new members of the LCAP pack. And again, it's Sarah Williams Kingsley, and I joined the LCAP pack this week. And we had a great meeting on Monday night. And unfortunately, we, since you last appointed people over the summer, several folks have had to resign their appointments or moved away. So we have more vacancies. So Board Members, please be on alert to make sure that your spots are filled so that we can have a full complement of members to continue this important work. As the PAC is very excited to build on the efforts of the past few years that led to the development of the new LCAP. One of the key goals for the coming year is to gain a deeper understanding of what is happening at the school site level, and we hope to do this through our own outreach and review of district-wide community engagement results. In a review of our draft schedule for the coming months, we identified a number of district efforts that we want to know more about to better inform our advisory role. They include understanding the outcomes from the district's efforts over the last year and summer to address learning loss, reengage students who have become disconnected, provide students and families other supports needed to respond to the impacts of the pandemic. Just tonight, we heard about differences in lunch structures for students, and that's certainly something that the LCAP PAC would be interested to learn more about, and how the short-term money that we have available that needs to be spent in the next several years could be utilized for infrastructure improvements. We also want to continue highlighting the recommendations put forth last year specifically about engagement across community groups. And part of that is communication. A key part of that is going to be how the funds that we've received as a district from the American Rescue Plan are being utilized, and how else we can better meet the needs of our community using those funds. And we appreciated the opportunity to engage with the board last year during multiple meetings, including a special meeting in March. And we look forward to building continued collaboration this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. William Kingsley, and thank you for all the work that our advisory committees do. Do we have any other advisory committees?
No, we don't.
We have a public comment?
We do have public comment from Terrence Gladney on 11.2.
As I looked at the responses to the overwhelming amount of emotional parent testimony, I, I, I thought about the recent article that I read about independent study material that was being distributed for high schoolers in Utah. It referred to a system of slavery, or referred to the system of slavery in that slavery treated well, they treated like family, you know, trying to explain away the pain and the, and the hate that was involved in that system of slavery. We cannot address our, we cannot address our shortcomings if we don't acknowledge them. Everything can be explained away as a negotiation issue. Facilities is not negotiated. It's an independent pot of money. We have millions of dollars in bond funds. You know, there, there's many things that probably are negotiated and negotiable, but not everything. When a parent says that they didn't receive communication or they feel slighted, that's not a negotiated issue. That's personal testimony that should not be discounted and tried to be painted over with a rosy, with a rosy paintbrush. You know, if, if we're talking about planning ahead, there's been discussions around how we'll be impacted as a community with, you know, possibly taking on refugees from Afghanistan. I would prefer that we start thinking ahead and don't wait until it happens. There's so many things that can be properly planned for as if they may happen, and if they don't ever happen, at least we have the ability to address them. But we can't wait until the first day of school to order materials such as picnic tables or anything else like, I mean, you know, I don't, I don't think we're asking for perfection or that mistakes won't happen, but the mistakes that are happening is just a lack of professionalism. Those of us in the community, if we did this in our own professional careers, we would not have a job. We cannot explain away things that we're supposed to prepare for. And you guys are in a position to speak up to them. You guys selectively respond and have these outrages to specific things. You guys are not supposed to be on one side or the other. You guys are supposed to be on the student's side, not the teacher's union side, not the superintendent's side. You guys are supposed to be representing the people that voted you there, and that's a collective community. So you have to put your personal opinions of individual organizations aside and figure out what's best for our kids, because those are the ones that are suffering. While you guys fight it back and forth as adults, shaking your head as people make testimony on behalf of their children, you don't get to explain that away. You just don't, and it's very disrespectful.
Could you please wrap it up, Mr. Gladney?
I'll wrap it up. Yep, I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Gladney. All right. Item 11.3, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you very much, President Pritchett. I just want to start by saying that we are still conducting our own analysis of attendance today.
I apologize. Go ahead. Yeah. Sorry.
That we are still analyzing what our attendance figures look like today, but I think I can confidently say that we estimate that we brought back while over 30,000 of our students back to campuses. And in normal times, this would be business as usual. Some of you have talked about what it was like in the past. I've been a parent who's taken my own children to our schools for the past four years, but our students have been away from in-person instruction for more than 18 months now. And it's hard not to marvel and maybe even feel a little emotional this evening about the significance of our first day back. I felt this today and saw it as well as parents dropped off their own students. I saw it and felt it as I dropped off my own children at their schools, as well as the schools that I visited. I had the honor of visiting Baker Elementary, Pacific Elementary, Crocker Riverside, Tahoe Elementary, and Einstein Middle School. Some of those schools have newly appointed principals, and they all expressed their enthusiasm at the number of parents and families that showed up this morning. In some cases, like at Einstein, families that we weren't aware would be wanting to enroll their children, and some adjustments had to be made last minute. I, of course, was incredibly excited to see our students back again, and I know and feel very strongly that the strong health and safety protocols that our staff have worked countless hours to implement and to design are those that will keep our students in in-person instruction, hopefully for the rest of the academic year. I do want to say that I hear your frustrations about independent study. I've expressed, and we will repeat again, that it was our goal to provide students with a program that goes beyond the minimum requirements of AB 130, because from the very beginning, we felt that it was not enough, and I still feel that way today. But in our efforts to offer a more thorough and more robust independent study program, we also negotiated on effects that might impact the working conditions based on the legislative intent of AB 130. Again, we planned for a program that had more time, synchronous time between our students and our teachers, but we didn't achieve an agreement that allowed us to implement that program. And during that time, we didn't provide our families with details about the program that we had envisioned because of that process. And I recognize and I acknowledge that that information would have been informative to families about their decision to enroll. We, I, have a lot of reflection to do about the role and responsibility in our decision-making to meet the needs of our students in this organization, especially the vast majority of our students, those that I had the privilege, along with Member Phillips, of meeting at Pacific. And let me just say particularly, some of those students that arrived without masks. They arrived without new tennis shoes. They arrived without new backpacks. Those are the students that we have a lot of reflection, I have a lot of reflection to do about the role and responsibility in decision-making for this organization. I apologize because I would have loved to offer more and because our families should have had information earlier. And I'll say that I will leave it to another day and probably to another venue. After all, this is a Board of Education meeting. This is for our board members to describe more fully in my own words, the type of reflections offered by Member Murawski earlier, because I too realize some, some things that are very unique about a superintendency in Sac City, Unif. But let me just say that for anyone who we caused extra stress and extra anxiety by the confusion of the independent study program and the implementation of it, I apologize and I take responsibility. Finally, I, I do want to echo some of you as board members, your expressions of gratitude to our staff. I want to say the same thing to them. I see the countless hours that they put in, and I also see the personal sacrifices that they endure and make to make sure that we are meeting the needs of our students. We don't celebrate it enough. We don't show it enough, and that is something that I want to recognize publicly. So thank you to all of our staff, particularly because we are living through a time where conditions are ever-changing. We are receiving new guidance very regularly. We receive guidance on Sunday evening. We received guidance yesterday, and we are doing everything that we can to pivot as quickly as we can to make sure that we are maintaining the overall safety and well-being of our students. I do not take lightly, but do want to just say thank you to our partners at Sac County Public Health. Most of the afternoon, we spent talking about New Joseph Bonheim. I want to just encourage and say to our community that we will continue to stay committed in terms of vaccination opportunities, in terms of testing opportunities as well, as we work to achieve and implement a structure in which we can have mandated testing. But again, we will continue to work toward that, and I have full faith that under leadership of staff, in this case, Victoria Flores, we will accomplish. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. And I apologize, Member Rhodes, I'm trying to learn this new system. Go ahead. I believe you had public, not public comment, a board comment on 11.2?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to request that the LCAP meetings, if they used to be, I was sent before, put on my calendar to attend the LCAP meetings when Vince was here. I would like to put that on the calendar again so that I can continue being part of those meetings as I was assigned last year with that group, like to continue that work. So if I can get that sent and put on my calendar so that I can also attend as a board member, I would appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
I just want to make sure, Ms. Moretti, if you can just take note of that, make sure that that's done. Thank you.
Item 11.4, I already gave most of my report in the opening comments, so I will skip 11.4, 11.5, Student Member Report.
For today's report, I will be dividing it into two parts. For the first part, I have gathered some observations about the first day of school with the Student Advisory Council. We have observed what COVID regulations was like to reflect the COVID situation in different high school campuses. And today, I have data from five different campuses. So first, we'll start with West Campus. One of our student members observed that masks have been worn correctly by a majority of students. Screening did happen, but they did not include questions, but temperature radar was present. When, during lunchtime, a lot of students gathered together, so social distancing was bad, and there wasn't much enforcement on the teacher's part, and lines were not distanced, and there were no drinking fountains. Water bottles and water refills are available. Sinks are open in bathrooms, and there are posters about mask and hygiene. Doors and windows were opened for ventilation. Plexiglass wall between staff and students is present in front desk. Hand sanitizers is available in every classroom, and Hand sanitizers is available in every classroom, and the cafeteria is closed, which caused a lot of crowd in other parts of the campus. In Rosemont, um, students are not allowed to go into the cafeteria. Restrooms closed halfway through the first day of school, which also caused many crowds in the quad. Masks were worn correctly by a majority of students. However, walking guidelines are not being followed or enforced. There were no screening or temperature checking in any entrance, and women's bathroom had no lock, no toilet paper, and the line is long. And there are no visible hand sanitizers in that school. The front gate was crowded after school, and many students took off their mask and gathered in big groups, which can, which can spread the virus really easily. And buses limited, um, fifteen students per bus. Water was not available, and students had to buy them from vending machines, which also caused a lot of crowd. Windows were not opened, and A C did not work in some classes, which had bad ventilation. And in, uh, McClatchy, masks were worn correctly, but some students pulled them down during passing periods. There were no screening in any entrance. Classrooms and some quads were closed. Um, therefore, some areas of the school were packed with students, and there were no, uh, social distancing. Teachers kept some of their doors open for ventilation. Um, students did not have masks on during lunch, even when they're not eating, and the same problem with students taking off their mask after school. And in John F. Kennedy, masks, um, were worn by a majority of students, but there were some students who wore them incorrectly with their nose out or other, or putting in on their chin. Some also took them off when they left campus. Water fountains, um, were closed, and, uh, but we were not offered water bottles. Bathrooms were clean, had supplies like soap, towels, and seat covers. Classes are fully packed. Stairs were crowded, and the one-way signs, uh, were not enforced or followed by students. Um, hand sanitizers were given. There were no screening or temperature checks in any entrance, and campus was throughout very crowded. And I was told by a teacher that cloth masks are available, but it has not been publicized. So the majority of the student body has no idea about that. Um, from this, um, oh, and also New Tech. New Tech is special because they have started school earlier than the, uh, other campuses. Um, hand sanitizers are available in every room, but bathrooms are only available for two persons at the same time. And as I mentioned before, sophomores and juniors, majority of those students were quarantined because they refused to test for COVID. And freshmen, um, students refuse to wear masks and, um, believe COVID is fake, which, um, caused a lot of frustrations in our, um, members. And seniors, uh, being the more mature class, they have worn their mask correctly. Um, from these observations, uh, we have noticed that the mature, uh, the major concerns is that guidelines are not being followed or enforced. There's a lack of screening at the entrances of all these campuses, and there is a lack of information given to students um, regarding Chromebooks or lockers, and also social distancing is not being enforced. Um, for the second part of this report, um, I'm going to talk about the initiatives of Student Advisory Council that we've come up for the coming school year. Um, first of all, we have a interest in sex education because we feel that the current sex education curriculum is not, um, inclusive and diverse enough. And also, we have interest in counselor communications, college prep accessibility, and also mental health resources. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Student Member Jane. Fantastic report. Item eleven point six Information Sharing by Board Members. Are you raising your hands? I didn't know if you were stretching or raising your hand. Member Phillips?
I just want to say, student board member John is wow, and I appreciate the in-depth detail that you gave on everything, and it sounds like you're listening to your colleagues and bringing that information to us. I really appreciate that. I'm going to enjoy having you here. Awesome.
Thank you, Member Phillips. I'm assuming you don't have another question, but I'll clear you. Okay, I got you. All right. Um, all right, seeing no others. Item twelve point O Consent Agenda? You have a motion? All right, I have a motion in a second. Student, for preferential vote?
Um, yes, on all open session items.
Perfect. Good job. All right, Superintendent Roll Call?
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Murawski?
Aye.
Member Wu?
Aye.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, um, item, uh, thirteen point O Business and Financial Information Reports. We have received them. And we don't have any public comment on those, right? Okay, um, item fourteen, um, point O Future Board Meeting, September sixteenth and October seventh at four thirty, closed session, six P M open session. Before we move back into closed session, I need a motion to extend our meeting. Um, let's say to eleven fifteen. Let's hope we don't need that long.
So moved.
All right, I got a motion in a second. Um, do we need a roll call vote? All in favor say aye. Oppose? All right, we are going to move into closed session.
Item Collins is feeding back the order of the section to advise all districts. Um, Ms. Collins, do we have any announcements out of closed session?
No, there are no announcements out of closed session.
All right, I get a motion to adjourn. I have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, media adjourn.